We did have an issue with the bells ringing, but I will say that the meeting is now live and ask you all to stand for the opening of the meeting. Almighty God, we, the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane, are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Atwood and councillor Cunningham will be absent today and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting. Seconded.
Councillor Landers has moved the motion for apologies. Is that motion, all those who agree, say please say aye.
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 To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Landers, may I have a motion for the confirmation of minutes, please?
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,656th meeting, held on Tuesday 10th of August 2021, be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
All those in favour, please say aye. Raise your hands. To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Councillors, before we move on with today's agenda, I'll make a few remarks as the newly appointed Chair of Council. This is a great honour and with the role comes duties, I commit to carrying out to the best of my ability. I want to reflect on the fact that we've just passed the minutes for the meeting number 4,656. In four years' time, the city of Brisbane will celebrate its centenary. 100 years since the City of Brisbane Act created the city essentially as we currently know it, from 20 different local authorities and a number of joint boards. The vast majority of those 4,656 meetings have been held in the chamber, in this chamber where the clerks, the deputy chair and I are currently sitting. Regrettably, you are not. Hopefully, we can all be here together next week. While there is a degree of majesty that comes from meeting in a place with over 90 years of history, the local law allows for council to meet in a location other than this chamber in circumstances as determined by the chief executive. Until the chamber opened, meetings were held in the Old Town Hall in Queen Street. We had a three-year interregnum in the temporary chamber in Anne Street when City Hall was closed for renovations. The CEO has certainly needed to exercise that responsibility over the past 18 months, aided by technology that provides the capability for hybrid or all online meetings. The flexibility now allowed for the conduct of meetings is a tremendous evolution, arguably a revolution. With flexibility comes an obligation on us all to not abuse the privilege that now allows participation from a location external to this chamber. It's not unreasonable to expect councillors to abide by standards that apply here in the chamber. Everyone who is joining a meeting from another location must use the neutral council background that has been provided in the meetings-only laptop and leave it in place for the duration of the meeting. To the extent possible, if you're at home with kids, dogs and cats, councillors should be in a quiet location, free from distraction, interruption and background noise. The flexibility now allowed to us should not be abused and if it is, may result in a warning or order about unsuitable meeting conduct as per the local law. I've been reflecting too, over the past week in particular, about general chamber behaviour. I have watched, listened to and learned from all chairs of council since my first meeting, number 4,206, when the fearsome Kevin Bianchi was the Chair. All have had variations on the way and means to conduct these meetings, formal and informal, and allowing for what is often referred to as robust debate. All would agree though, that robust debate should not descend into personal abuse or adverse reflections on fellow councillors. I remind all councillors, there is no parliamentary privilege immunity in this place. We're all well-paid professionals with responsibilities to represent our constituents. Please stick to debate on policies, not personalities. I don't believe our constituents regard schoolyard name-calling as good value for money and doesn't, in my observation, advance any particular argument for policy change. Councillors, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a civic cabinet chair of any standing committee? Councillor Mackay.
Thank you Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, this morning, you announced a new round of grant funding through our Better Suburbs Initiative. Can you outline how these grants will ensure we remain a city of neighbourhoods by looking for opportunities to renew our suburban centres?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you for the question to councillor Mackay. As you pointed out this morning, we were pleased to announce $3 million in new funding under the new Better Suburbs Grant Programme. This is a brand-new programme introduced this financial year, aimed at supporting our community organisations and our not-for-profits right across the city. Now, we know that last year was a very difficult year for the pandemic. We had changes to our grant programmes to fund, you know, much-needed support through the Lord Mayor's Covid Assistance Programme and that saw hundreds of community organisations and sporting clubs receive support. And what we've done this year is introduce a new programme which takes some of the best outcomes and items of that package previously and combines it with what we would normally do with our grant funding programme and we've upped the ante this year as well. In the past two years, there's been 5.4 million in grant funding for community organisations, so through our various community grants programmes. And this year, we've increased that to 5.75 million. So this is the highest level we've seen in some years of grant funding and I'm proud of that because it's a time when our community really needs that support. And so today's announcement comes with the grant programme in two tranches. We have the first section, which is smaller grants of up to $10,000 for local not-for-profit and sporting groups. And then there's also a second opportunity between $10,000 and $200,000 and that's specifically about facilities maintenance and improvements to facilities. And so these two tranches will allow sporting clubs and community groups to apply. And what we've done is, our original intention was to have this done in two tranches. So one in this half of the year and then the second tranche early next year, in the first half of next year. But what we've done is brought it forward to make sure that the funding flows as quickly as possible. So it's all being done in one tranche in this part of the year. And when we open the grant programme later on this month, in approximately 13 days' time, what we want to do is get that money flowing out the door as quickly as possible. And so for those smaller grants of up to $10,000, we want them to be fast and flexible and we want that money to come very quickly. And that was one of the things that people appreciated with our Covid Assistance Programme last year, that the money came very quickly. And so when it comes to grants of up to $10,000, we want that money to be turned around very quickly, within a matter of weeks, so that people aren't waiting for months and months for an approval and then for the paperwork to go through. We want them to get that money as quickly as possible so that it can start flowing into the community and having the benefit that we intended it for. Also want to let people know that what we've done this year as well is expand the criteria so that not only council lesses can obtain this funding, but there's also an opportunity for people on either their own land, private land or even state land, if they're a community facility or sporting organisation, to get some access to this funding as well. So that's an expansion in the programme and I think that will also help us benefit more groups and more individuals and more people through this programme. We know that right now, sporting clubs are facing a situation where community sport has been cancelled and that is another blow after what has been a very difficult 18 months. Now, we hope that that can resume very quickly and very soon. We'd like to obviously see community sport gearing up again. But in the meantime, we want to make sure that money is flowing to these groups as quickly as possible. Councillor Mackay and I were out at the Turinga Rovers just this morning, talking to them about some of the challenges that they'd faced. But they were very appreciative of the support that council had been able to provide in the past 12 to 18 months. And there was the rent waiver that we'd provided for them, there was the Covid Assistance Grant that we provided for them. We were able to provide support for some deep cleaning that was required after they became unfortunately caught up in one of the Covid hotspots just recently. And we'd also helped them with some other work as well. And that is just one example of so many across the city where we've stepped in to support and help our community groups and sporting organisations. So please, all councillors in the meeting today, get the word out, make sure that your local community and sporting organisations are aware of this and also let them know how to apply. There's information on the council website live right now as we speak and certainly people can be gearing up, ready for the opening of those applications on the 30th of August. So thank you for the question councillor Mackay. We look forward to working with our wonderful community and sporting organisations to get this money working for a good cause.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Are there any other questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, this LMP administration has just finished reviewing Brisbane's ferry services. We know that public transport reviews are precursors to public transport cuts for LMP administrations. Already you and your LMP administration has left ferries to rot and are playing demolition derby with our ferry terminals. Just this week, the LMP also cut the 480 bus service without any warning or prior community consultation. We know a review of bus services is next on your agenda. So Lord Mayor, when will you stop cutting public transport and ruining Brisbane's livability?
Mr Chair. Okay, I assume that means I can answer, right? I didn't, I can't. Apologies, Lord Mayor, for the floor of yours.
That's right. I was waiting for the call, that's all. Okay, look, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Cassidy for the question. Look, you're right, we are currently undertaking a ferry services review and the purpose of this review is very clearly to aim at improving ferry services in our city, making sure that we're allocating the resources where they will experience the most patronage and take-up and making sure that we're meeting the demands of our ferry patrons and also getting more people on board. Our record when it comes to public transport is crystal clear. Year after year after year, our budget funding has increased for public transport. Year after year, our investment in fleet and public transport facilities and services has increased. And so while we hear a spin line from Labour councillors about cuts, that's just lazy politics because there is actually no factual basis for it. In cases where there is low patronage, like we saw with Norman Park, we haven't pocketed a saving there. What we've done is reallocated funding to make sure that we can improve services elsewhere where they're actually used. The aim of investing in public transport should always be to get more people onto public transport and that's exactly what we intend to do with ferry services, get more people using ferry services. That's also what we intend to do with the Brisbane Metro and the associated review that will happen with Brisbane Metro. We know that Brisbane Metro will free up more buses for the suburbs and I'm very excited about the opportunities to increase services as a result of bringing in Brisbane Metro. This is a very exciting time for our city as we approach the Olympics in 2032 and we have major public transport projects like Cross River Rail and Brisbane Metro gearing up with our new green bridges. This is a real opportunity to make sure we're supporting public and active modes of travel and that's exactly what we're doing. That's where our funding priorities are going, that's where the projects we're building are focused on, public and active transport. And we will always continue our record of improving access to public transport, improving services and also continually increasing the budget. I invite councillor Cassidy to actually have a look at the proposed levels of budget funding, not only this year, but going forward in future years for public transport. You will see it's only going in one direction and that is up, up, up. We are increasing our investment in public transport, we intend to continue doing so. If you have a look at the budget forwards, the numbers go up, they do not go down. So any suggestion about cuts is a blatant misrepresentation of the facts. We intend to increase funding for public transport, we intend to increase services for public transport and we intend to increase patronage. Now, obviously, there's levers that we have, that we can pull and there's also levers that the state government can pull as well. But we're confident we can work together to get some good outcomes here with the synergies that would be created by the new Cross River Rail network and the new Brisbane Metro network, but also our new ferry network as well, which will offer improved services to the people of Brisbane and hopefully get more people on our ferry services. They're a great iconic feature of the city. We want to continue growing those services and also growing the funding that goes with those services as well. So I again point to the budget documents, they show public transport services increasing and that continues on for years and years to come and that's our intention. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Are there any other questions? Point of order, do you, councillor Cassidy?
Yeah, thanks Chair. I move suspension of standing orders to enable me to move the following urgency motion that this LMP run at the Brisbane City Council rules out cutting any more public transport services. I've just sent that through.
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Cassidy. You have three minutes to establish urgency.
Thanks very much Chair. This is a very, very simple proposition. What we are seeking today from council is a commitment that we won't see any more public transport cuts. We've heard the rhetoric just now from the Lord Mayor, but what we know is the reality, that when the LMP review public transport services, they lead to cuts. Even before there was a ferry review, which has just wrapped up in the last week or so, we saw cuts to ferry services and we've seen our ferries left to rot. We know last time, the LMP undertook a bus network review that led to cuts. There was a bus network review coming imminently down the line and what we want to do today is to urgently say to the people of Brisbane as a council that we will not be cutting more public transport services. And I think we need to do that as a council and to give people the confidence that they can engage that process fully. We've seen just this week, the 480 bus service has been cut by this LMP administration without any community consultation. So we are deeply concerned about the process that this Lord Mayor and LMP administration will engage in if we don't have a clear and public commitment to maintaining all public transport services and promoting public transport services instead of cutting them.
Thank you councillor Cassidy. Councillor Cassidy has moved an urgency motion. Those who believe the matter is urgent, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, please raise your hands. The matter has been declared urgent. Councillor Cassidy. To substantive debate.
Thanks very much Chair. So just days ago, or the last week, we've seen the ferry network review undertaken by this LMP administration to ferry services complete. And before that review even took place, and we don't know what the outcome of that is yet, we know that it was concocted in secret and we know that this administration was seeking to do some polling about ferry network usage rather than genuine.
Mr Chair. Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. As per section 42-2B of the meeting's local law 2001, I move that this procedural motion, that debate on the motion now before the meeting be adjourned until the conclusion of business on today's agenda. Seconded.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. The Deputy Mayor has moved a procedural motion that the debate on the motion now be adjourned until the conclusion of the business on today's agenda. It's been seconded by councillor Landers. All who.
Vincere ship.
All who agree with that procedural motion, please say aye.
Oh, hang on, isn't there any debate? What about debate?
There's no debate on a procedural motion and it's been approved by a majority of councillors. This matter will now be moved to the.
You've got to call it and you've got to allow us to dissent. You've got to handle this.
Call those who voted no, come on.
You've got to call it properly councillor.
You're a dictator or you're a councillor. Come on.
Thank you. I'll do the count again. All those who agree with the moving of this motion to be adjourned until the conclusion of the business of today's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
The ayes have it.
I think the ayes have it.
A divisional call by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Cassidy, I believe, or councillor Street. Ring the bells. Clarks, please read the result of that division. Oh, sorry. Okay, I'm calling a division. All those of the motion before us, please say aye.
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 Those saying no, please raise your hands to say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Don't the clerks have to read the results? Clarks, please read the results of the division.
Sorry, Mr Chair, we have no voice, sound from the clerks.
The Chair's muted.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and 7 against.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Thank you. I presume that was cooked up prior to today, but I just want to check. We moved the suspension of standing orders to, well councillor Cassidy did, moved the suspension of standing orders to enable the urgency motion to be moved. So that means standing orders don't apply. And that was agreed to by the chamber. Then councillor Adams moved a motion, I think it was under 42-2B, that the debate on the motion be adjourned, but we had already suspended standing orders and agreed to as a council. So I'm just checking why the standing orders overruled the urgency motion to allow the debate. That seems to be counterproductive to the purpose of suspending the rules to enable an urgency motion.
Thank you councillor Johnson. I don't believe that standing orders do override the meeting's local law. I will now proceed with question time.
Mr Point of Order, Mr Chairman, just to be clear, the suspension of standing orders has to be moved to move an urgency motion. Therefore, the standing orders no longer apply. We have suspended the business of council and the rules to enable the urgency motion to be moved. And that occurred and was agreed to by all the LMP councillors. So I'm just a little bit confused about why then it seems that despite the fact that the the rules were suspended, you then allowed the rules to be applied by councillor Adams. And again, I'm presuming, because I didn't quite hear what she said, but I think 42-2B. So I just would like some clarity on this because the purpose of suspending standing orders is to.
Suspend the agenda, not meeting locals law.
So my understanding is of 42B is that councillor may move the debate, a procedural motion and that is what has been allowed here by this procedural motion. The rules were suspended to allow the moving of the motion, but debate on the resolution needs to be according to the rules and will be later in the day at the conclusion of today's agenda. I now move on with question time, councillor Hutton.
Thank you Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, councillors officially established the Brisbane 2032 Host City Office within the organisation. Could you please update the chamber on what this means for the delivery of the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games?
Wanting for the call, Mr Chair.
Sorry. You have the floor, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Hutton for the question. It was my great pleasure to chair the first committee meeting today, which of course with economic development, as we all know, as my passion has been for many years, but now with the addition of the Olympic and Paralympic Games responsibilities there as well. And go through, outline some of the work that we've been doing so far and make sure that our committee members are very excited for things that we'll be talking about in coming weeks and months as well. It's been 28 days now since the IOC announced that we were going to be the 35th Olympiad sitting and it's been 10 days since the Lord Mayor was actually released from hotel quarantine in the fantastic work that he did. I'm sure he's enjoyed every one of those as well. 3,944 days until we actually begin the Games in 2032. The IOC emphatically supported Brisbane and South East Queensland's bid with a vote 72 to 5 and we thank them again for this support. We have been coming of age for several years now here in Brisbane and it hasn't happened by accident. It's been a concerted effort by many to put Brisbane on the world map. And as the Prime Minister said, only global cities can secure the Olympic Games. So this is a fitting recognition for Brisbane standing across our region and the world. Over the past few years, we've slowly begun securing major events like the NRL Magic Ground, where we have the envy of our southern capitals. Of course, the Pacquiao and Horn fight a couple of years ago was an enormous one for the Asia-Pacific region. And of course, the Asia-Pacific City Summit continues to go from strength to strength as well. And now, of course, we add to that Olympic and Paralympics. And as the manager of the Brisbane Host City Office said today, Dyke Curry, already, it's in the lexicon, it's Paris, Los Angeles, Brisbane. And that is the company that we are now in when it comes to the Olympic Games as well. $8.1 billion is the anticipated boost to the Queensland economy by securing the Games, as estimated by KPMG. And that's matched with anticipating 91,000 full-time jobs. So as a former Lord Mayor of this place used to say regularly, if they don't know your name, they won't visit you and if they won't visit you, they won't invest in you. So we're very, very excited about the opportunities that we are going to have. 2032 will be a cost-neutral Games, as all of the people in the chambers here heard earlier today with our this year with our presentations, and a carbon-neutral game. The Olympics of the 21st century is the new norm and we're very excited to be very, very first one on that on that trajectory as well. But of course, as we talked about in committee today, this does align with our existing plans for Brisbane as well. Major public transport like Brisbane Metro and Cross River Rail underway, other major projects like green bridges that are connecting the city. And as the Lord Mayor said in his speech to IOC delegates, Brisbane will be ready well before 2032, allowing us time to polish the final product. Everything will be stress-tested well in advance. And we know that this speaks directly to 84% of the venues which already exist, speaks to major public transport projects that are underway, major projects like green bridges and road upgrades. 18 of the 32 competition venues will be in Brisbane and 57% of the sports will be held within five kilometres of the Brisbane CBD. So including 11 of the 18 required for the Paralympics as well. So we went through some of the new bills today when we're in committee, the Brisbane Indoor Sports Centre in Albion, the Athletes' Village in Hamilton, the International Broadcast Centre in South Brisbane. And we want the Games to be the best of them all. That is our aspiration. That's exactly why we have set up the Host City Office within the Brisbane City Council Organisation. It will be the coordinator of council's input into the Games. They are working on legacy planning, as we heard this morning, the delivery roadmap, staging and sequencing as well as precinct renewal.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Griffiths for the question. Well, the answer is, we're not. We're certainly not. And in the case of the Maruka Bowls Club, I, the latest information that I've been given is that we have reached an agreement with the new tenant to go in there, who's keen to get in there and set up and, and kick off the provision of some great new services for your local community. Now, obviously, we've been excited about the opportunity that they've put forward as a, as a proposal. And as I said, the latest we've been told is that they're keen to get in there and get operating. So we are keen to support the activation of that site. And the way to do that is actually to get a tenant in there, and that's exactly what we've done. And that process is now coming to the point where we can see that site activated. I know the community wants to see it activated, we want to see it activated, and also the new operators want to see it activated as well. So I'm confident we'll get a good outcome there when it comes to Maruka. Obviously, we had a situation where, you know, across the city, there were a number of bowls clubs that wound up. And we've been working with the community to try and find new uses for those bowls clubs. Now, some of those work well, some of those don't work so well, but ultimately, it's a matter of working out what will work in a particular site. Now, the proposal here is actually quite an exciting one and an innovative one, which will basically see a new community hub and some community services being provided that will really benefit the local community, I think. So this, this, I think, could be a really good example of a reuse of a disused bowls club. And it would be good to see that up and running as soon as possible. But certainly, we've, we've held up our end of the bargain in terms of what we went out to tender for. The, there were interested proposals from the community. The one that has received that successful tender is keen to get going, and we're keen to see them going as well. So any suggestion that council is not supporting the community or community facilities is just political game-playing, an attempt at political grandstanding. We are really keen to see these facilities, like Maruka Bowls Club, activated. And we're looking forward to that gearing up in the near future.
Lord Mayor, are there any other questions?
Point of order, Mr Chair.
I'm sorry, councillor Griffiths?
Yeah, point of order.
Point of order, yes.
Yep. I'd just like to move suspension of standing orders to allow me to move the following urgency motion.
You have three minutes to establish urgency, councillor Griffiths.
No worry, thank you. And I've just sent it to you.
Seconded off your urgency motion?
Yeah, I've just sent, I've just sent it through, sorry.
Councillor Strunk is the seconder.
Yes.
Thank you. This council opposes the sale, demolition, or private development of the Brisbane City Council-owned Maruka Bowls Club site, and commits to restoring the facility fully.
Have you sent this through?
Yes.
Okay, you have three minutes to establish urgency.
Yes. As, as we just heard from the Lord Mayor, he said that we, we look after our sites. What we heard last week from this Lord Mayor was anything but. We admitted to bulldoze the East Brisbane Bowls Club by allowing its demolition. We can't have this happen to other community facilities across Brisbane, such as Maruka Bowls Club. We need to protect these spaces and facilities from this LMP mayor and this LMP administration. In my area, we've seen a private development on the Wellers Hills Bowls Club site, and that's been championed by the deputy mayor, councillor Adams. We've also seen the selling orphan development of the Yoronga Bowls Club site, which has been ongoing and disappointing for the local community. The Maruka Bowls Club was a magnificent facility during the Commonwealth Games, heavily invested in by council, and something that we and the residents are very proud of. But under this administration, it's been left neglected and empty by this council for many years. Clearly, and disappointingly, Lord Mayor and the LMP say one thing about looking after community facilities, but here is track record where they haven't looked after this facility, or in fact, the residents who use this facility, or the facilities in our suburbs. I urge all councillors to support this urgency motion, protecting and upgrading the Maruka, Maruka Bowls Club facility, so that we can actually have ongoing good facilities that are looked after, looked after so our residents can use them properly. Thank you.
Griffiths, I'm not sure that established urgency, but we'll put the motion. All those who agree with the, this being an urgent motion, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, please raise your hands.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Griffiths, seconded by councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells.
It's not a new trick. Take it in thirteen years.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Yes, Mr Chairman, I seek leave to suspend standing orders in order to move an urgency motion that this council, that curbside collection is extended to include residents of retirement villages.
Seconded.
Councillor Johnson, have you sent that urgency motion through?
Yes, I have.
To the rest of the council? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please, you have three minutes to establish urgency.
Yes, thank you. I'm moving the urgency motion before us today, and hopefully it'll get on the agenda for debate later tonight. It's come to my attention that Brisbane City Council is refusing to allow residents of retirement villages who live in independent living to put out any household items they have as part of the curbside collection process. Curbside collection is currently underway in my ward, and this matter is, you know, extremely urgent because residents are actually missing out on the curbside collection service. I think it is extremely unfair that retirement village residents are unable to access curbside collection. They pay rates through the company that owns the retirement village, or the not-for-profit group that owns the retirement village. They have been lifelong contributors to rates in Brisbane for many years, and they're being denied access to a service that's underway now on some sort of council technicality. So I think it is critically urgent that council policy is changed to allow residents of retirement villages to be able to participate in council's curbside cleanup collection programme now, and certainly for all suburbs, given that the curbside collection has now been restored for Brisbane. So I just, this is quite urgent because it's underway at the moment. I certainly encourage all councillors to support the urgency motion, and certainly I'd like to have a very quick debate about it, so we can all agree that our longstanding Brisbane residents who've paid rates their whole lives, and who now live in a different type of accommodation, can have access to the same level of waste collection services as other residents of Brisbane. Thanks.
Councillor Johnson has moved an urgency motion. All those who agree that this is an urgent matter, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
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 Those who say no, please say so and raise your hands.
No. No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Griffiths, seconded by councillor Strunk. Please ring the bells. We have everybody here. Those who are voting aye on this division, please say aye. Raise your hands.
Aye. Aye.
Those no, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
No.
Are there any abstentions? I see none. The ayes have it. We return to question time.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Yes, Mr Chairman, I seek leave to suspend standing orders in order to move an urgency motion that this council, that curbside collection is extended to include residents of retirement villages.
Seconded.
Councillor Johnson, have you sent that urgency motion through?
Yes, I have.
To the rest of the council? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, you have three minutes to establish urgency.
Yes, thank you. I'm moving the urgency motion before us today, and hopefully it'll get on the agenda for debate later tonight. It's come to my attention that Brisbane City Council is refusing to allow residents of retirement villages who live in independent living to put out any household items they have as part of the curbside collection process. Curbside collection is currently underway in my ward, and this matter is, you know, extremely urgent because residents are actually missing out on the curbside collection service. I think it is extremely unfair that retirement village residents are unable to access curbside collection. They pay rates through the company that owns the retirement village, or the not-for-profit group that owns the retirement village. They have been lifelong contributors to rates in Brisbane for many years, and they're being denied access to a service that's underway now on some sort of council technicality. So I think it is critically urgent that council policy is changed to allow residents of retirement villages to be able to participate in council's curbside cleanup collection programme now, and certainly for all suburbs, given that the curbside collection has now been restored for Brisbane. So I just, this is quite urgent because it's underway at the moment. I certainly encourage all councillors to support the urgency motion, and certainly I'd like to have a very quick debate about it, so we can all agree that our longstanding Brisbane residents who've paid rates their whole lives, and who now live in a different type of accommodation, can have access to the same level of waste collection services as other residents of Brisbane. Thanks.
Councillor Johnson has moved an urgency motion. All those who agree that this is an urgent matter, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
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 Those who say no, please say so and raise your hands.
No.
So just me, you say no to.
Are there any abstentions?
Division.
The nose, please wait. The nose have it.
Division.
Division.
Called by councillor Johnson and councillor Griffiths. Please ring the bells.
The Labour councillors are allowed to have a debate, but not me. Got it.
He made a mistake. He cut you off too quickly.
All right. Division was called. All those who agree with the matter, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Those say no, please say so and raise your hands.
No.
Are there any abstentions? No, the nose have it. Clarks, please read the numbers.
Mr Chair, the nose have it, the voting being seven in favour and eighteen against.
Thank you. We return to question time. Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the Brisbane Metro project will revolutionise transport in our city. Can you please provide the chamber with an update on the infrastructure work for the metro project, and specifically what major construction will be underway later this year?
Thank you, councillor Murphy.
Well, thank you very much, councillor Owen, for the question. People of Brisbane have been crying out for better transport systems for years now. Many of us have visited other cities around the globe with outstanding transport systems, so Singapore, Tokyo, London, Paris, Shanghai, and it makes us want Brisbane to match that standard. And that's the Shrinna Council's vision, to deliver world-class public transport systems for our city. And this is what Brisbane Metro will bring to Brisbane. No other city in the Southern Hemisphere is using our sophisticated battery-electric trackless trams. We will be the first. Our terribly congested bus network has been crying out for some sort of relief, too. We know that busters do two-thirds of the heavy lifting when it comes to the public transport trips in Brisbane. And with the growth that our city is experiencing, there's too many bottlenecks and too many stations at capacity in the network. Victoria Bridge, the Cultural Centre, Marty Hill, King George Square, Queen Street Station, and Woolangaba all need relief. Mr Chair, thank goodness the Shrinna Council has its priorities right and a clear vision for our city. And Metro is now on the way to free up the bus network and to make travel through the city and out into the suburbs even better than before. With each and every day that passes, we move closer to delivering this transport solution. The Brisbane Metro project is already well underway, and I'm pleased to provide an update on the infrastructure that will support the all-electric metro fleet. One of the biggest achievements to date on the project was reached only a matter of weeks ago. The early works in South Brisbane were completed, which was no small feat. Since July twenty twenty, council has been completing works to relocate sewer infrastructure under Gray Street. This work was all about getting South Brisbane ready for metro and ready for the future growth in the coming years. The project team has provided a new sewer pump station at Alexander Smith Place Park to help cater for future growth and development in the area. To give an idea of how enormous this task was, the construction crew had a tunnel boring machine travelling two hundred and fifty metres under Gray Street from the Queensland Museum towards Cupack. They've also had to excavate seventeen metres underground to install the new sewer pump station. The result is a new pump station that has approximately five times the capacity of the old pump station, a monumental effort, and it's great to have that part of the project now ticked off. Brisbane Move is now turning their attention to the first metro vehicle charging station. This charging facility will be located in the inner northern busway near Countess Street. This month, work will start to get underway to build that facility. This will be one of the four charging facilities for metro vehicles, with the others being located at Ernie's Roundabout, UQ Lakes, and the Brisbane Metro Depot in Rochdale. The Countess Street facility is particularly important because it will be used by the pilot vehicle once it arrives in Brisbane next year. Making sure that the Countess Street chargers operate as we need them will be a crucial part of pilot vehicle testing in twenty twenty-two. The Countess Street facility will feature six hundred kilowatt flash toaster chargers. As I said last week, the chargers will be powerful enough to fully charge a vehicle in under six minutes. If you were to plug your iPhone into one of these chargers, it'd be fully charged in the blink of an eye. But I wouldn't recommend this because you won't have much of an iPhone afterwards. This is a big piece of work, and construction will be ongoing until early twenty twenty-three. The first stage of work involves installing the charging infrastructure for the pilot vehicle, which will be ready in time for its arrival. The second stage of work, which will extend into twenty twenty-three, will be to build the permanent end-of-trip facilities and another three charging stations. Even better, the majority of civil infrastructure for charging will be sourced locally and built by a local workforce. Mr Chair, Metro is starting to come alive. By the end of twenty twenty-one, we will all be constantly reminded of the state of art, state-of-the-art metro vehicles will be arriving on our city's doorstep. By the end of the year, Brisbane Move will be building a new two hundred and twenty-five metre-long tunnel underneath Adelaide Street. This tunnel will provide a dedicated connection for metro and bus services between Victoria Bridge and the existing inner northern busway and the King George Square Station. We absolutely need this underground connection for metro to work, but it will also help reduce the number of buses travelling at surface level along Adelaide Street. This means we'll be able to deliver significant pedestrian and public realm improvements on Adelaide Street and revitalise one of the city's oldest heritage streets. Of course, there will be traffic and travel changes and disruptions that come along with infrastructure works at this scale. And in the coming weeks, this will be communicated to the city, so everyone knows what to expect once this work gets underway. And while work will be underway mining a tunnel in the CBD, Adco Constructions will be just as busy building the Metro Depot in Rochdale. This is another milestone to the project that will hit for the end of the year, starting major construction on the depot facility. Mr Chair, there's so much metro construction work planned for twenty twenty-one. And while the leader of the opposition has been so concerned that not a single shovel has hit the ground on metro, my only concern, Chair, is that we won't have enough.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired. Are there Are there any other questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Standards, Community Health and Safety Committee, councillor Marks. Last week, the Lord Mayor said the Reconciliation Action Plan was a responsibility for multiple portfolios. So councillor Marks, could you tell the chamber what you're doing to implement and develop council's reconciliation action plan?
Sorry, councillor Marks.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, for a start, through you, Mr. Chair, it's the Chair of City Standards, it's a shortened title now, so Community Health and Safety, while as my portfolio stays the same, the title is shortened to just City Standards. Look, I'm more than happy to work with councillor Howard within this space, as was discussed last week in chambers, and it's actually in the budget book as under Programme Five. The Action Reconciliation Plan is under the lead of councillor Howard in her chair portfolio. And as always, and as one of, I think we have six now, we have six councillors who are part of the Lord Mayor's representative for the multicultural community space, which, as you can imagine, includes all the multicultural communities across our city. I'm more than happy to be under, working with councillor Howard in that space and working in whatever way I'm required to from her portfolio to facilitate that programme.
Thank you. Councillor Marks, are there any other questions? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Chair of Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, council's speed awareness monitors and wildlife awareness monitors are making Brisbane's streets safer in our residential area, as well as protecting our biodiversity. Can you update where this programme is rolling out in next suburbs?
Thank you. Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And can I also thank councillor Hammond for the question? It's a great pleasure of mine to be up, to be able to update the chamber on another great Shrinna Council initiative that seeks to keep our community safe, as well as keeping the fauna in our city safe as well. So the SAM sign programme, as many would know, has been a significant feature of the management of council's road network and is an integral part of the Shrinna Council's plan to get residents home sooner and safer. Council maintains 188 SAM signs and 29 WHAM signs across our city and they're a welcome sight to many in our suburbs as they make a marked difference to the motorist behaviour in the communities through a whole range of improved driver behaviours. SAM signs were installed in Brisbane in 2013 and more than 617 million vehicles have been recorded passing various SAM signs in the eight years that they've been in place. The data for these are used to inform decisions around road use and further SAM sign placement. And as you would all know, Brisbane is Australia's most biodiverse capital city and protecting wildlife has been a long-time, ongoing commitment of this council. Council's Wildlife Awareness Monitors, or WHAM, signs are concentrated in and around the areas where Brisbane's fauna population is at their highest. We've continued to roll out the programme across Brisbane by using evidence-based analysis to identify locations where wildlife strikes are most likely. Wildlife awareness monitors heighten the driver awareness during daylight and also nighttime hours in areas where there has been observed high wildlife activity. This messaging is customised to emphasise the potential presence of the most at-risk animals, such as the juvenile koalas, which are most prevalent in Brisbane during the summer months, in particular December and January. Across our city, council has over 730 footing locations for our SAMs throughout all of our suburbs and each of our wards. And council will continue to work both with councillors and local residents to make sure that signs are located where they're most needed in their wards. The SAM and WHAM sign programme is a proven and effective way of ensuring that we have a far better compliance behaviour from motorists. We know that SAM signs are effective and over the hundreds of millions of trips that have been recorded over the last eight years, council has recorded an average reduction of 8.1 kilometres an hour for vehicles identified as exceeding the speed limit when they came to the range of the SAM sign. And for those who are within the normal range, they also have been reducing motorist kilometres per hour by up to 4.6 kilometres. The Slow for SAM programme hasn't just stopped there. Noting the marked improvement in awareness and driver safety on our roads, we've now dedicated funding towards another important element of our community. And in addition to the 188 SAM signs which are being rotated around Brisbane, council will now have a dedicated 31 signs located near zones in our city to support safety around the pickup and drop-off of our primary school students in particular. This most recent budget has invested $719,000 to expand the SAMs for schools programme to a further 14 schools in Brisbane. The selection of these schools and the direction of that signage will be assessed by council officers in an evidence-based assessment according to percentage of vehicles exceeding the speed limit on a volume's vehicle using the road sign each weekday and site suitability for line of sight and other elements to make sure that SAMs operate properly. In the coming weeks, respective councillors will be informed about these new SAM sites, which we added to the next most at-risk locations through the city. The Shrinna Council will deliver 100 speed awareness monitors at school frontages over the next four years and a commitment that we are making good progress on. The SAMs for schools were placed permanently and only been used during the school term to increase speed awareness and encourage safe driver behaviour around our schools. Mr. Chair, the Shrinna Council is committed to expanding practical programmes which are protecting Brisbane's residents and wildlife through evidence-based policies like these, making Brisbane an even better place to live.
Thank you, councillor Wines. There any further questions? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the South Brisbane Cemetery at Dutton Park is one of the largest green spaces in Brisbane's inner city. And while its primary function is obviously as a cemetery, it also holds significant value as a, this natural habitat for native wildlife and is a bit of a hub for biodiversity in the context of the inner south side. The cemetery wasn't mapped as part of the biodiversity overlay and to date, the management of the cemetery has seemed to downplay its ecological value in favour of its primary purpose as a cemetery. So I'm interested in your thoughts on this and whether you'd be willing to undertake to look more closely at the potential of better recognising and supporting the cemetery's role as a wildlife hub and natural reserve.
Thank you, councillor Sri. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you councillor Sri for the question. And as you know, councillor Sri, we have a number of cemeteries right across Brisbane and we have a fantastic group of people, our staff, who look after those cemeteries. And I know that they're very often places where people go and really need the support of the Shrinna Council in what we do and what we, what we have in those particular areas. So I, I just want to say to you that there is a group called the Friends of the South Brisbane Cemetery. I've met with them on occasions and I know, and I know that they do a most fantastic job of looking after that cemetery. It's, you know, we have a number of those groups right across Brisbane, certainly.
It barely does anything.
So I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, I didn't hear that interjection, so I'll just continue if that's okay. Councillor Sri, I am answering your question, not the interjections of others. Councillor Sri, I think that groups such as the Friends of the South Brisbane Cemetery certainly play such an important role in what we do right across Brisbane. And I know that the people that are involved in that are very passionate about making sure that the graves are kept in a, in a good fashion. They make sure that the history is, is there and.
Are you raising a point of order, councillor Sri?
Yeah, sorry, Chair. Just on relevance, the question was specifically about the cemetery's role as a, as a natural native habitat and its ecological value. And I was hoping to draw councillor Howard back to that part of the question.
Councillor Howard is answering the question. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you councillor Sri. I understand the question, but I, I think it's important that we understand the role that is played by these groups. I think that those groups, as I said, play such an important role right across Brisbane. It's, it's a very sensitive area as well, that we need to be very cognisant of what we do in these spaces. We need to make sure that we are maintaining the areas, that we are making sure that if there are activities that we need to be looking at, that we can do, that we can do that. I, I just would like to sort of, again, and I know that I'm belabouring the point of the friend, the role of the friends, but I know that anything that happens within that cemetery is something that they are very, very aware of. And I know that it is something that they talk to our offices about constantly. And so through you, Mr. Chair, to councillor Sri, very happy to meet with you to, to have a discussion about, you know, what this group does and maybe what we can do into the future. But can I just probably finish by saying that I think that it's important for all of us to understand the role that these community groups and these volunteer groups play in our cemeteries right across Brisbane. It's just not the South Brisbane Cemetery. We have the Tuwong Cemetery, of course, is one of the oldest that we have.
Sorry, councillor Sri, point of order.
Yeah, through you again on relevance. Councillor Howard's almost wrapping up her answer and she still hasn't engaged with the question, which is whether she would undertake to look into recognising the environmental values of the cemetery and.
I believe councillor Howard is relevant to the question. Councillor Sri, councillor Howard.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if I can just say that during the 1800s, when there were no formal parks for residents and visitors to enjoy, cemeteries were in fact the first publicly accessible green spaces offering views of the city. And so, as I said before, council manages 12 cemeteries, including operational cemeteries in Crematoria in Pinnaroo, Hammond and Mount Gravat, as well as nine historic cemeteries, which are closed to new burials. And the historic cemeteries are less impacted by people and machinery, creating spaces for nature to flourish. A variety of reptiles are located throughout the cemetery. At both Griffiths University and the University of Queensland have conducted population counts of bearded dragons within the historic Tuwong Cemetery. Images of various fauna at the Tuwong Cemetery were actually shown in one of our committee presentations. So through you, Mr. Chair, council's operating cemeteries experience more activity through various works and visitors. And despite this, council continues to manage and support the flora and fauna. Extensive work has been undertaken at Mount Gravat Cemetery to support the koala population, including ensuring the significant scribbling gum eucalyptus trees along University Road remain undisturbed. And images of koala fencing at Mount Gravat Cemetery were shown to our.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Are there any further questions? Councillor Landers.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, the Cube Effect is a youth music programme, giving emerging artists and bands the opportunity to engage with industry insiders and compete for prizes. Can you outline how residents can get involved for 2022?
I keep muting my mic. Councillor Howard.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, Mr. Chair, can I thank councillor Landers for the question because both she and I are absolutely besotted with our Cube Effect winners. And I know that she was with me at the awards night and we're absolutely thrilled that now it's the opportunity for new people to take advantage of the Cube Effect. And of course, entries are now open. And as I said, the Cube Effect is an initiative that we're extremely proud of. The Shrinna Council is just really doing everything we can to help our emerging artists and the Cube Effect is just one of those opportunities that we have for young and emerging artists. I've had the immense privilege of seeing so many young Brisbane artists benefit from the programme over the past six years since the Cube Effect was established by the Shrinna Council. In the past six years, we've seen more than 165 young emerging Brisbane artists benefit from the incredible opportunities presented by the Cube Effect, which has helped many award-winning Brisbane artists launch successful music careers. Last year, six Cube Effect alumni were recognised as finalists in the 2021 Queensland Music Awards, with Psycho winning both Song of the Year and the Pop category and Hope Dee winning the Rock category. And we're incredibly proud to have helped these talented young artists make their way in the music industry. It is just one of the many success stories of the Cube Effect alumni and what this programme can do to help emerging artists establish themselves in the music industry. And so I'm very excited to announce that applications for next year's Cube Effect programme have now opened. We are calling on the next generation of singers, songwriters and bands to kickstart their music career by applying for the Cube Effect 2022. Cube Effect has a proven track record of unearthing the best new talent and shining a spotlight on the city's diverse music industry. There's no doubt that Cube Effect has played a part in launching the music careers of some truly amazing Brisbane-based artists. We've watched Cube Effect alumni such as Psycho, Betty Ray's and Hope Dee go on to make Triple J's hottest 100 and perform at some of the country's largest music festivals. But if you're a young Brisbane artist looking for your next big break and you want to hear, we really want to hear from you. You have until the 4th of October to get your application in for the opportunity to become another Brisbane success story. If you're successful, you'll be one of 24 local acts next year to get the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity of working alongside music industry experts, produce your very own music video and hone your live performance skills. As well as being a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to kickstart your music career, next year's finalists will also be in the running to win a swag of great prizes. Last year's winners received cash prizes, photographic packages, paid live performances and the chance to play a support gig at a major live music venue. Moondust Merchants are on board to deliver the programme in 2022 and are looking forward to seeing the next round of musicians take part. If you're still not convinced, this is the Best Overall Performance Award winner, Avangi had to say about the Cube Effect. She said, "The professional development sessions were so beneficial and I gained some really insightful knowledge into the music industry. Of course, getting a music video made it was pretty awesome too." As the winner of the Best Overall Performance Award, we'll be performing at the Tivoli, which is an amazing opportunity. "We also can't wait to play Brisbane's street serenades in September. To other artists thinking of applying for next year, I would say do it because it could be extremely beneficial to your career as a musician. There's really nothing to lose by giving it a go. So what are you waiting for? Get onto council's website now and search for Cube Effect to find out more about how you could be Brisbane's next big star." And through you, Mr. Chair, could I encourage all of our councillors to encourage people within their wards to, to go online, have a look at what the criteria is and really encourage our emerging artists. We know that the creative industries are doing it particularly tough during COVID. We know that the opportunity to perform hasn't been there and we know that the Cube Effect is such an amazing way to be able to get our emerging artists onto the platform of, of people being able to see what they're doing. So we were thrilled also to see that they were part of the Olympics announcement. And again, to perform along beside John Stevenson is something that I would have liked to have done in my day, but sadly, I don't have the voice to go with that. So fantastic to see.
Thank you, councillor Howard. Your time has expired. Good sales job. That ends question time for today and we move on to the rest of the agenda. Establishment and Coordination Committee, Lord Mayor, can you please move the report Establishment and Coordination Committee report, the 9th of August 2021?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, the 9th of August 2021 be adopted.
The E and C meeting has been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, that the report of the Establishment Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 9th of August 2021 be adopted, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Before I go on to the items in front of us, I did want to acknowledge that today is a particularly important day because 50 years ago, on this day, Neville Bonner was sworn in as a Liberal senator for Queensland. And of course, Neville was the very first Indigenous Australian to serve in the Australian Parliament. So that was 50 years ago today. Before entering Parliament, Neville moved from Palm Island, where he was in a mission, to Ipswich in 1960 and he joined the One People Australia League, an Aboriginal rights organisation. He served as one of the league's directors for several years before becoming the Queensland President in 1970. He was obviously then involved with the Liberal Party and he was able to fill a casual vacancy in the Senate in 1971 that came up and he was subsequently elected in his own right the following. in the Senate in 1971 that came up. And he was subsequently elected in his own right the following year in 1972. So filled the vacancy and then went to an election the year after and was elected at that point in his own right. Obviously became a well-known parliamentary figure during his years as a senator and was a respected commentator on Indigenous and Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander issues, serving on numerous Senate and parliamentary committees. He also served on the, as the parliamentary representative on the council of the then Australia Institute of Aboriginal Studies. As an elder in the Yagura people, Neville was named Joint Australian of the Year in 1979, along with naturalist Harry Butler. He was also appointed as an officer of the Order of Australia and received an honorary doctorate from Griffith University in 1993. The federal seat of Bonner is named in his honour, currently represented by Ross Vasta. And I know that Ross is very proud to have the name Bonner on the electorate that he represents. And also I know that we're very proud as a city to have one of our new double-decker city cats named Neville Bonner, something that we did last year and something we're very proud of. And that's a city cat that also every single day up and down the river flies the Aboriginal flag as well. Now, you're aware that our city cats fly the Australian Red Edson. That's, that's normal for them to fly, which is the red or the maritime version of the Australian flag. But the Neville Bonner also flies the Aboriginal flag permanently as well. So I think just at this point in time, we should all reflect on the contribution that Neville made, not only to the parliament, not only to politics, but to our nation. He was a genuinely great man and someone that I know we are all very proud of and we're all in awe of. And so today, on the 50th anniversary of him being sworn into the Senate, we should remember and acknowledge his contribution. In other matters, the, the lighting up of council assets, as I traditionally talk about, today marks the 76th anniversary of the proclamation of Indonesian independence. So on the 17th of August 1945, so today's Indonesian Independence Day, and we're lighting up the Story Bridge, the Victoria Bridge and the Radcliffe Place sculptures in red and white, so the national colours of Indonesia. And I want to give my congratulations to our local Indonesian Brisbane community on this special day in your, in your national agenda. This week also marks Queensland Road Safety Week, held every year in August. And I know there's been quite a bit of coverage of Road Safety Week already, and I know that will continue. We're lighting up the Tropical Dome at Mount Cotha, Story and Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place sculptures in yellow on Wednesday and also on Friday in acknowledgement of Queensland Road Safety Week. On Thursday, we're lighting up the Tropical Dome at Mount Cotha and also the Victoria Bridge and the Radcliffe Place sculptures in purple to support the campaign known as We Are the 15. We Are the 15 is a global campaign acknowledging that around 15% of the world's population has a disability. And the campaign has actually been launched by the International Paralympic Committee in the lead up to the Paralympic Games that we're just about to witness later on this month. So on the 24th of October, sorry, the 24th of August, the Paralympic Games kick off in Tokyo and we'll see them continue through to the 5th of September. And so the We Are the 15 campaign acknowledges that 15% of the globe's population has a disability, but also to celebrate what they are achieving as well. And there's no better way of acknowledging and celebrating that than to see the amazing achievements of the Paralympians that we're about to witness. And we've, we've been inspired by them in the past. I have no doubt we'll be inspired by them from the 24th of August on. And I'm particularly looking forward to seeing us well represented in the Paralympic Games in 2032 as well. I had a meeting recently with Sporting Wheelies and they're very excited about the opportunity in the lead up to the 2032 Games to really increase the focus on parasport. And that is something that we're keen to do, not only through the creation of a dedicated facility for parasport and sport for people with a disability at Albion. So that's at the current side of the racetrack. That was part of our joint proposal with the other two levels of government to the IOC. And the IOC really received that very positively. But also what we can do in terms of other parasport facilities across the city and whether we can really get people inspired into parasport in the lead up to the Games. We've, we've talked about the young kids who will be inspired to get involved in a sport in the lead up to the Olympics, but also we want to see more involvement in parasport as well. One figure that the Sporting Wheelies gave me, which just shocked me and really was cause to think, is that they said that 60% of the people who will compete in the Paralympic Games in 2032 don't currently have an injury. So basically, they haven't had the injury which would lead them to have a disability at this point in time. So that really makes you think. So there, there are, I guess you could call them able-bodied people walking around at the moment who between now and 2032 will suffer some kind of injury and will then compete in the Paralympic Games in 2032. So it really makes you think. And we're keen to make sure we do our part to support not only the Olympics, but also the Paralympic Games here in Brisbane in 2032. And look forward to rolling out our support, together with the other two levels of government, to really invest in that parasport aspect of our community because it is really important to inspire all of us and also to show just what is possible in, against the odds of having an injury, against the odds of having a disability. So we're obviously keen to support the We, We the 15 campaign and that will involve lighting up those assets on Thursday. The items in front of us, item A is the Stores Board submission for the significant contracting plan for the fabrication, supply and installation of the Story Bridge maintenance platforms. Now, this particular item is in addition to the existing maintenance platforms that we have. So there's, there's obviously various long-term access points to the Story Bridge that have been used for many years to gain access and perform maintenance. What we're talking about is additional facilities which allow us to conduct ongoing maintenance, but will also facilitate the ongoing programme to paint or repaint the Story Bridge and revitalise the Story Bridge. And as we've talked about before, this is not a matter of simply whacking a new coat of paint on the bridge. This is a very complex and involved project. It involves stripping back the existing lead-based paint on many sections of the bridge. It involves treating corrosion on the bridge. It also involves capturing any of that paint and corrosion that is stripped from the bridge to make sure that it doesn't go into the river or go into the surrounding environment. So every piece that comes off the bridge, every speck of paint, every piece of paint or corrosion has to be captured, dealt with safely and taken away. And so all of this has to be performed in enclosure and has to be done on a series of platforms. So this is work that we're really gearing up to do. We've, we've done a number of test sections on the bridge.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension, Chair.
Councillor Sanders has moved, Landers has moved for extension of time. Is there a second? Councillor Hutton, thank you. Lord Mayor, you have an extra 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Put that to the vote. All those in favour of extension of time for the Lord Mayor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, please say no and raise your hands. Lord Mayor, you have an extension of time for 10 minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you councillor Sanders, I mean Landers. Yeah, the process for obviously restoring the bridge is very involved, as I was alluding to. And so these maintenance platforms will, will set us up for the long term, not only to do the current project of restoration, but future work that needs to be done to the bridge as well. And so this is an investment in the long-term future of what is a grand asset for the city, but also an asset which has reached a significant age. Now, we know that this building that you're in at the moment, Mr. Chair, City Hall, when it reached a certain age was due for a major refurb and renewal project. And that was a project that took a significant amount of time and money, but it was one that was essential in protecting the heritage of the city and what is a key community asset. And our work on the Story Bridge is along that vein. It's about not only making sure that the bridge has a new coat of paint, but that the bridge can continue to serve the people of Brisbane for generations to come. But as with any older asset, it needs continual and ongoing work. And, and we are investing in the resources and the capability to make sure that we can do that continual and ongoing work. These bridge maintenance platforms are part of that process. Item B is the lease of premises for Eagle Farm Warehouse and Repository. It council has leased those premises at Unit 1 and Unit 4, 112 Cullen Avenue, Eagle Farm, for the purposes of a warehouse and repository. The lease first commenced in 2012. It expires on the 18th of June next year. And so as with any lease that we have in the lead up to the potential expiry of the lease, we look at our options going forward. In this case, we have a further two, five-year options that are available. And so we're required to make a decision on whether we exercise those options prior to the 18th of December this year. The current rent is considered above the market rent at this point in time. Obviously, there's been various fluctuations over the years. And so the Lesor Perpetual Trustee Company has offered to amend the current lease and offer council a first option term of three years at a reduced rent and a reduction to the annual increase as well. The second five-year option term will be retained. So we retain the, the option to go for a second five-year term. But this particular renegotiation and extension for three years will result in a benefit to council and a reduced financial commitment of approximately $725,000. So we're talking about almost three quarters of a million dollars in a better outcome for the ratepayers of Brisbane as a result of this renegotiation. Item C is the procurement policy and plan, which sets out how council conducts strategic procurement and contracting. Obviously, this is a requirement under the City of Brisbane regulation. In simple terms, the policy and plan provides detailed information about council's procurement activities. Council always looks for ways to improve our procurement processes. And one of the ways that we've done that in recent times is by really ramping up the focus on local benefits and the opportunity to have our local buy policy, which supports local business in South East Queensland, where we've aimed to have 80% of contracts with local businesses. And in the past financial year, we achieved 80.25% of, of our spend with local businesses in South East Queensland, which at the end of the financial year was, which was 950 million. So we're approaching a billion dollars in contracts and work that goes into our local businesses here in South East Queensland. So it's a great outcome. But it's not just about local businesses either. It's also about what we can do to support social enterprises. And we have a specific policy, a procurement policy, where we engage social enterprises. So ultimately, this is about businesses that basically can put their profits into a not-for-profit situation and provide a community service as a result. So it runs as a business, but instead of the profits going into an individual's pockets or a series of individuals' pockets, the profits get reinvested back into the community by the provision of services and also support for charities. And so as part of our procurement policy, we're targeting $7 million at least of procurement to be done with social enterprises over the course of this plan. And that's an increase on what we're doing currently. We see the opportunities where we've engaged companies like Maltana Services to clean our buses as a result of the additional cleaning requirements of COVID. And we've heard from councillor Murphy in this chamber before about the great results that Maltana has been able to provide as a social enterprise. They're not only a social enterprise, they're employing wherever possible Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander workers. They're giving those workers opportunities that they may not otherwise have. And we're seeing great outcomes for that. And this is something that we're seeing increasingly done by different governments, where they're increasing their spend with social enterprises. And there's been great results because of that. We see, for example, local charitable organisations who actually, in some cases, get the contract to mow grass or cut grass in our local parks. And there's some great examples of that across the city. And in past years, I've had the opportunity to meet with some of these organisations that are doing work, including one up in Nunda, councillor Allen, where they're doing fantastic work, not only providing park, park grass cutting, but also cleaning services as well. And they're, they're through the social enterprise employing people that might not otherwise be able to find work, including people with a disability. We see that our bin enclosures that you see very prominently around the streets of our city and suburbs. So these are the grey and yellow bin enclosures that encase the wheelie bins that are available for public use. They are made by Help Enterprises.
Not all.
And they do a great job in providing that service to Brisbane City Council. They also do work for Queensland Rail as well. So I had the chance to visit Help Enterprises relatively recently too and see the wonderful work they do. They also make letterboxes for the private market. So if you're in the market for a letterbox, then you should get one of those great Help Enterprises letterboxes. But we'll certainly continue working with organisations like Help Enterprises through our procurement policy to provide those flow-on benefits to the community. So there's some great examples in here of things that we're doing through our procurement policies to support our community, whether it's supporting local business or whether it's supporting social enterprise. There's great outcomes here. And I would point out once again that if Labor councillors had their way, we'd be doing less contracting and more work in-house, which would then deny some of these opportunities for local businesses and local social enterprises. The reality is, I think, there's a balance to be achieved here when it comes to working with local business, working with social enterprise and seeing those benefits distributed widely in the community. And I think we're really hitting the right note when it, when it comes to achieving that balance. I think that if you did more work in-house, there would be significant disadvantages when it comes to the work that we're doing, supporting local business and social enterprise. So I commend this particular item to the chamber. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Is there any debate?
Yes.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I will contribute to the debate on all three items before us today, starting with clause A, which is the Stores Board submission for the contracting plan for the Story Bridge maintenance platforms. And this is, of course, the third, I think, contractor item related to the Story Bridge refurbishment come through council in the, in as many weeks, in the last three weeks, which reminds us each and every week that this LMP administration has wasted ratepayers' money and time going down the path of outsourcing, contracting out basic work, only to have to bring it back in-house and reorganise and replan that work to be done in-house in council, which has caused delays to this project and in the long run, wasted money along the way. So this, this part of it is to build story platforms for Story Bridge works. We see that there is interest from local and overseas suppliers in here as well. And because of that, we're seeing significant risks that there will be overseas supply chain issues. And we've seen that in other contracts, other contracts that this LMP administration has entered into, particularly playground supplies, having international supply chain issues when they've been importing components rather than having them built locally. So because of these risks, and we're seeing this increasingly. So, because of these risks, and we're seeing this increasingly in contracts overseen by this Lord Mayor, we're seeing larger and larger contingencies built into these contracts, which are obviously being kept secret. They are what must be this Lord Mayor's favourite term, commercial in confidence. And these issues all point to the fact that these contracts, where they have to be contracted out externally, where they can't be done, in this instance, these platforms can't be done in-house, they should be awarded to local manufacturers to support local jobs and reduce the risks of cost overruns and delays and risks of using up those increasingly large contingencies. We know the Lord Mayor likes to say that when a project comes in on budget, he likes to crow about that. But what he won't tell the people of Brisbane is that, in some cases, particularly on large projects like Kingsley Smith Drive, almost all, almost all of that very, very large contingency, which is the worst-case scenario, has been eaten up. And because this is all kept secret from the people of Brisbane, we don't know how much more has been spent on a project than otherwise would have been if those risks were mitigated in the first place by seeking local contractors and local suppliers on projects just like this. So, that is our position on that. And that is very clear for us, that local suppliers and local manufacturers supporting local jobs should be prioritised in this contract over overseas suppliers. In Clause B, the lease of premises for the Eagle Farm Warehouse and Repository will be supporting this item today. And Clause C, the procurement policy and plan for this financial year, 2021, 2022, the Lord Mayor has thrown out a couple of examples, a couple of isolated examples in terms of supporting social enterprises, which we think is a good thing, where they can be supported, where this work isn't being contracted out, contracted out at the expense of good, long-term, permanent jobs here in council. The Lord Mayor just said that the contracting out figure would be approaching a billion dollars this year. And council has a target to support $7 million in contracts to social enterprises. So, I don't really think $7 million out of a billion dollars is necessarily much for this Lord Mayor to crow about. I know he's got those couple of examples that he can recall, visiting in the last couple of years, Chair. And the Lord Mayor did also say that a balance, a balance needs to be achieved. I think that were his words, in terms of contracting out versus doing things in-house and providing that good value for money and that stricter control over the process by doing things in-house in council. And we agree, a balance does need to be achieved. We just think, under this LMP administration, the balance has tipped too far in terms of contracting out and seeking to replace good, ongoing, long-term jobs with contractors and labour hire staff particularly. So, I don't think the procurement of labour hire workers doing the same jobs as permanent, ongoing employees and replacing those permanent, ongoing employees is a good use of procurement and a good use of contracting out. There are examples, of course, in supporting local businesses and social enterprises that we support. But where we see this balance that the Lord Mayor talks about tip too far, too far to the way of contracting out and casualisation and labour hire people replacing permanent employees within council, that's where we have a problem. And we are crystal clear on that. I don't think there's any argument. We're strong on the record for that. We support ongoing work, and this Lord Mayor does not. He made that very clear in the last year when that question was put to him, Chair. He said he doesn't believe that where there is ongoing council work that should be done by ongoing council employees. And that's a departure from even what the previous LMP Mayor Graham Quirk used to say. He didn't necessarily practise that, but he certainly used to say it. But this Lord Mayor now has a departure from that. And that is a really worrying thing for the people of Brisbane and for local businesses in Brisbane. When you seek to casualise and you seek to outsource permanent work, people have less ability to confidently go to their local businesses and support them. So, there's two sides to this. It's not just supporting businesses that we're contracting work out to, like labour hire companies. It's also supporting businesses in our suburbs. And when people don't have that employment security, they're less able to go out there and spend their money locally. So, I won't be verbal by the Lord Mayor. We're very clear on the record as to what we do support in terms of contracting and what we don't support. We will be supporting the procurement policy because we need one, but we're very clearly on the record as to what we believe should and should not be contracted out.
Thank you. Any other speakers, councillor Swan?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I enter to speak on Item B and C of the E and C report. Firstly, Item B is on the lease of premises for Eagle Farm Warehouse and Repository. Well, council currently leases premises located at Unit One and Four, 112 Cullen Avenue, Eagle Farm, for warehouse and repository. The repository is used for the active storage of physical records. And the warehouse accommodates logistics stores, supplies and materials to support council operations. The lease commenced on 19th June 2012 and expires on 18th June 2022, with two further five-year option terms. Council is required to exercise the first five-year option term no later than 18th December 2021. The current rent is considered above the market rent, as the Lord Mayor mentioned, and the first five-year option term does not meet council's future accommodation requirements. Through negotiations, the Lesso has offered to amend the current leases and offer council a first option term of three years at a reduced rent and a reduction to the annual increases. The second five-year option term will be retained. And yeah, and as Lord Mayor say, council is expected to benefit from a reduced financial commitment of approximately $725,500 over the new option terms of the lease. And the Lesso has confirmed the offer is valid until the 18th September 2021. And if accepted by council, the new lease term will commence on 19th June 2022. And now, I'd like to move to Item C. Item C is the update to SP 103 of Procurement Policy and Plan. As the Lord Mayor mentioned, council is required by the City of Brisbane Regulation to adopt the Procurement Policy and Plan annually. The policy and plan sets out how council conducts strategic procurement and contracting and provides detailed information about our procurement activities. Like all areas of council, procurement is an area in which we continue to identify ways to improve processes, hence the reason this document receives updates. Our commitment to local business is so great that in the 2021 to 2022, sorry, 2022 to 2021 financial year, out of total of $1.18 billion in procurement activities, council's local spend was 80.25%, or equate to $948.6 million. And this year, we continue that target of 80% annual procurement spend with local suppliers. I know the Lord Mayor maintains a keen interest in ensuring we are tracking well and support our local businesses. Local buy not only supports our local businesses, but it supports employment and opportunities in the local area. That means local jobs. And as the Lord Mayor mentioned, a key change to this policy is the target of social procurement spend, which has lifted to $7 million. Council engaged 39 social enterprises last financial year, and we will continue to support this sector. And unlike labour, we believe in the ability of our community. So, that's why we decided to spend money locally to support local businesses and let the local businesses create more jobs and opportunities in our communities. And other amendments to the plan include removal of surplus worths alignment with the current corporate plan 2021 to 22 and updating field services to city standards where applicable in the document. And when it comes to procurement, the Srinarayya Council is intent to support local suppliers, especially during these times of ongoing uncertainty and the toughness of this pandemic. And I recommend the report to the chamber.
Thank you. Councillor Swan, are there any other speakers? Councillor Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. And just to let you know, it is John Ston with a T. I rise to speak on Item C, the Procurement Policy and Plan. There are a couple of aspects of Item C that I want to particularly discuss. Firstly, the exemptions from the council procurement policy and their purposes. I want to draw everyone's attention to page 14, B34. "Council invites tenders, proposals and quotes for expressions of interest in accordance with the following thresholds." And one of those thresholds is for projects valued at less than $10,000. Only one quote is needed for a project to occur. You still have to be able to demonstrate value for money. Now, that's also reinforced in page 17 and page 18 that looks at low-value procurement and also councillors' offices expenditure, which gives councillors preference to local suppliers to deliver on projects. It's really interesting to hear the Lord Mayor talk about supporting local businesses when this council is currently refusing to allow a mural to be undertaken by a local artist in my ward. All of the guidelines have been met regarding provision of a quote. And the SEF guidelines have been met. I've signed off on the project, as has the...
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you, councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. This is on the procurement policy, not on a specific procurement within a local ward.
Thank you, councillor Adams. So, I draw your attention back, councillor John Ston, to the matter before us, which is not for specific procurement, for an overall, an overarching procurement policy.
Yes, and I'm making the point, Mr Chairman, in my debate, that council's procurement policy is not being followed. Despite the assurances of councillor Marks and the CEO, Brisbane City Council is not following its own procurement policy when it comes to this small mural. Instead, it appears to be giving the public art team in Brisbane City Council the right to determine what projects happen. Now, that is contrary to the financing guidelines that we're being asked to re-endorse today. That is contrary to the existing council procurement guidelines that were endorsed over a year ago in this place. I think council's behaviour with respect to this is highlighting a very significant problem. The cost of a mural for which we have a quote from a well-known, well-respected, extremely experienced local artist who has delivered multiple projects for council, for the state government and for our local community, is being denied the work. And council simply is referring to a procurement policy, which we are debating today, that allows low-value procurement to be undertaken and for projects to be delivered under $10,000 with just the one quote. And as the Lord Mayor has made the point today, the preference is that quotes and tenders come from local businesses. Now, that has happened. So, I think that this council does not follow its own policy. I think there is something fundamentally sick and wrong with allowing the public art team to determine a project on grounds that do not follow council's procurement policy.
I believe that councillor Johnson needs to withdraw the concept that the public art team are sick. That is offensive to council officers, and I ask her to withdraw that.
Yes, and councillor Johnson, I don't believe the public arts team is mentioned in any part of this report. Please confine your comments to the report before us.
I agree with you completely, Mr Chairman. And that highlights my point that council is not following its own procurement policy when it comes to the delivery of public artworks. And this...
Councillor Johnson, can you please address the position or the question put to you by councillor Adams? And the question was, will you please withdraw your observation on the public arts team and your description of them as sick?
Well, Mr Chairman, I don't address questions put by other councillors. That's not my role. You asked me to come back to the debate, which I was doing, and I have followed your direction.
And I asked you to withdraw that observation about...
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did.
No, you didn't. You asked me to come back to debate, which I did.
Two aspects to what I asked you of you, councillor Johnson.
I don't believe there was, Mr Chairman.
Would you please not refer to council officers as sick? And will you withdraw that comment?
No, I won't, because there is a fundamental problem with the way in which this team has been allowed to override council's procurement policy. And I am extremely concerned that despite what this council says, even again today, that the council procurement policy is not being followed. The cost of tendering for public artworks has been artificially inflated. And we are not getting value for money, which is one of the key requirements under this policy. So, I'm extremely concerned about this and have referred the matter to the Queensland Ombudsman. Secondly, I'd like to draw everyone's attention to the major construction projects. I think this gives people a really good idea of how council views procurement. And it adds to the debate that I've just been making. In this procurement policy, a number of major projects are outlined. And there are 20 major construction projects outlined that are in this procurement plan for approval. Of the 20 projects, one is in an ALP ward, two are in the Greens Ward, 13 are in the LMP ward, and four are citywide road resurfacing contracts. There's none, of course, in Tennyson Ward, because not only is the bait not allowed about local matters that I raised.
Point of order, councillor Adams.
Councillor Johnson clearly said at the beginning of her speech that she was talking on Item C and Item C only. I believe she's now gone to Item A.
Thank you, councillor John Ston, to the matter before us, please.
Honestly, I don't believe that the deputy mayor of this city understands what's being debated here today. I'm debating the procurement policy and plan. That plan includes a list of projects for the city. I'm talking about pages 27, 28 and 29 of the procurement plan. Now, this is the person who acts as the Lord Mayor of the city, and she doesn't know what's in the materials before us today. This is a person who's been the finance chair of this city and doesn't know what's in the financial reports before us today. And this is someone who is the deputy mayor of the city and in charge of economic development. But she does not know what is in the procurement plan before us today. So, let me be clear, Mr Chairman, for the benefit of the deputy mayor, who does not know what's in her own civic cabinet report, this is the second time she's seen it, because it came to civic cabinet two weeks ago, it's in the attachment, which is called the Procurement Plan and Policy. And I'm referring to pages 29, 30, and the, sorry, 27, 28, 29 and 30. So, let me be clear. This administration is funding projects in its own ward to the exclusion of other parts of the city. That is fundamentally dishonest. It is political. It is unfair to other parts of the city that are being neglected. And we certainly know why, because the deputy mayor does not know what is in the council papers before us today. Well, I do, and I've read them, and I've had a look at what they mean. They mean that 65% of all major projects in this plan before us today are in LMP wards. The ALP get half a percent of a project, just the one.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Adams.
Councillor Johnson, take a question on what percentage of the city she looks after?
Councillor Johnson, will you take a question from councillor Adams?
Not from somebody who doesn't know what's in her own council papers, Mr Chairman, no. So, I urge councillor Adams... Yeah, I urge councillor Adams to read the council papers instead of just coming in here and voting, because the decision she makes as the deputy mayor and the person in charge of economic...
Councillor Johnson, your time has expired. Is there any other debate? Councillor Wines. You're on mute, councillor Wines.
Excuse me, councillor, Mr Chair, I did push the button, but it did not respond and I apologise. I am speaking on Item A in this report, the contracting plan for the fabrication, supply and installation of story bridge maintenance platforms. Can I please ask the council to draw their attention to Items twelve and thirteen in this report, which focus on the function of what we are trying to achieve? We are looking to build a series of seventeen point five metre wide platforms so as to support the ongoing maintenance of what is the most iconic engineering structure in Brisbane, if not all Queensland. It is, as discussed earlier, starting to show a little bit of its age. It is vital and necessary to the operation of the transport network in this city. And these gantries, which are proposed for the contract proposers and will be constructed if supported, are there to make sure that there is a safe working environment for the staff. It will make it a cleaner operation for both the issues identified here, such as the lead paint removal and other wastewater issues will be dealt with in a more hygienic way, in a safer way for both staff and the public. The work will be cheaper for council in the long run, we'll be able to maintain it using these gantries in a more cost-effective way. It will allow us to keep more of the work in-house, which I know some councillors are always keen to see, and it will mean that the longevity of this particular structure will be able to be maintained and will be able to be used as a vital and key, and dare I say iconic, part of this city's skyline for many years to come. And I hope that all councillors will be able to support it today.
Sorry, I'm having trouble with my mute button too. Councillor Wines, thank you very much for any other debate. Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I also want to speak briefly on Item A and, sorry, B and C. The, no, it's A, it's A and B, my apologies, A, B, C. Look, you will be, as a former chair of infrastructure, quite familiar with this particular stores board submission regarding the installation of the Story Bridge maintenance platforms. Councillor Wines, as the new chair in this portfolio through Mr Chair, has picked up exactly what this is all about. And the Lord Mayor, in his initial speech, has also mentioned this. Look, this is about something that's more permanent for the city, which is the Story Bridge. I would suggest most people have seen that very famous photo of that workman who was out there on a balancing beam. I'm guessing, I think it was somewhere in America, maybe without a harness and that, and then there's a whole row of workmen sitting there with their feet dangling over the edge of the platform. And as a side note, when I had my first visit out to the Story Bridge, there was a talk that originally to actually get to work on the Story Bridge, you actually had to walk across one of those beams from one side of the bridge across to the other, across the roadway. And of course, if you were not able to do that, then you were clearly not, were not suitable to work on the Story Bridge. Well, those days have long gone now, and we actually install permanent maintenance platforms for our staff to work from. And this is about that. So it's a procurement, there's three different maintenance platforms and all the associated electrical supply, the running wells, the bridge strengthening and the wastewater treatment facility. And this is obviously about making sure that the workers are able to have a safe, environmentally compliant capital and routine maintenance of the below deck parts of the Story Bridge structure. Obviously, what people as a general can't see, but obviously super important, and it's also going to minimise the public safety impacts during such work. The existing underbridge cantries at the moment are becoming less reliable due to their age and they're just no longer suited for heavy structural works or blasting or painting of below deck elements. And additionally, they do not capture and treat the contaminated water or other debris from the bridge washdown and other routine maintenance activities. Something that we've talked about here before in the chamber regarding the encapsulation that we've talked about, that's actually currently on the bridge at the moment. The Lord Mayor mentioned that. There's not one speck of dust, water or paint that leaves the Story Bridge and heads anywhere else. It's completely captured. This is about making permanent structures, so going forward for the next generations, workers will be able to work safely on that bridge. Item B is the lease of the premises for Eagle Farm Warehouse and Repository. I've had the pleasure of visiting this location. And if you've ever wondered where any of the stuff comes from that the council officers use, like the shovels on the roadside, the stakes that they use to put around the trees, all that sort of stuff, that's where it all comes from. It's all stored out there, even the hammers, the nails, the brochures that come out to your ward office. They're all into that one warehouse and then they're disseminated out from there. So obviously, it's a very important building that we own and we lease, and I recommend the report to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marks. Is there any further debate? Nobody raising their hand. Lord Mayor, write a reply.
Yes, Mr Chair, thank you. Look, I just wanted to add that councillor Johnston appears not to have listened to anything that you said in your preamble to the meeting, because all she could do today was personally attack councillor Adams.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
The Lord Mayor is doing exactly that, personally attacking me when I responded simply to the allegations by councillor Adams that I was
Not an opportunity for debate.
So, no, you can't attack me if it's your deputy mayor that did that.
This is not a relevant point of order. Councillor, Lord Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. It's quite clear that there's two sets of rules. Councillor Johnson can say
No, I'm not going to accept being bullied by the Lord Mayor
No one can actually call her out when she personally attacks and bullies other councillors. No one can call her out when she provides inaccurate information. Quite clear that she doesn't believe the rules of
And I will not accept it.
Councillor Johnson, please do not speak over the Lord Mayor or over me as the chair. Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order.
I just ask you to rule that perhaps this is an unnecessary diversion from the subject matter and that maybe the mayor should come back to the items for debate.
Thank you, councillor Sri. Could we all please proceed without making any personal observations on each other? I would appreciate that as the new chair. Lord Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I appreciate the support of Labour councillors on these items going forward and thank them for the spirit in which they have approached this. That is a positive thing. And look forward to receiving that support in the debate, in the vote that's to come now. Thank you.
Thank you. I now put the Establishment and Coordination Report. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
The ayes have it.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order. Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councils have left the meeting.
A motion for suspension of time has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton for afternoon tea, which will take place when all councillors have left this meeting place. All those in favour, please say aye. All those saying no, please raise your hands and say no. The ayes have it. We'll be back after that break for afternoon tea. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. The meeting is resumed. And we're turning to the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting. councillor Allen.
Mister Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday the tenth of August twenty twenty one be adopted.
Thank you. Councillor Allen, is it seconded?
Seconded, seconded.
Okay. The report has been moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Hutton. Is there any debate?
Uh. Thank you, Mister Chair. At last week's committee meeting, we had a report on a particular uh development uh application and that um presentation was provided by the manager of development services. And the application related to the expansion of the Sims Resource Renewal Metal Recycling Operations at one hundred and forty eight Dun Road, Rock Lee. Uh Sims Resource Recycling and the Circular Economy. This approval will allow the company to open a first-of-its-kind pilot facility that will transform waste material left over from the metals recycling operations that under that they undertake at that location into a clean gas that can be reused to support the production of new products, such as construction materials like gravel and crushed stone. So it is a global first. Uh. The company is aiming to save one million tonnes of waste globally by twenty thirty with this particular type of technology. It's the first of its kind, not only in Australia but globally. And Brisbane has been chosen uh from one of nine potential locations around the world for what's effectively a uh a first-off offering uh in this particular technology domain. So research and development centres like these create jobs and help to put our city on the world map for innovation and excellence, which is certainly something that the city can be extremely proud of and will help to make Brisbane even better. And certainly, um from our perspective, we uh want to encourage innovation in Brisbane across all domains. And quite often, we look at this innovation primarily in the technology space, but here we've got innovation in an industrial domain, and I think that's very, very encouraging. Uh. The Rock Lee facility is expected to be operational by twenty twenty two. And as I noted, if the pilot is successful, more facilities like this will be rolled out around Australia and globally. So in conclusion, it's important we continue to welcome proposals like this uh right here in our own backyard um to improve local services, to improve um the sustainability of our city and create newer and better jobs, and obviously to support the city's economic recovery. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Is there any debate? I see no hands raised. Um. All those in favour of this report, please say aye. Raise your hands. Thank you. And those voting no, please say so and raise your hands. Are there any abstentions? I declare that report carried. Councillor Murphy, the Public and Active Transport Committee report, please.
Thanks very much, Chair. I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the tenth of August twenty twenty one be adopted.
Is there a second though? Thank you, councillor Hutton. The uh Public and Active Transport Committee report has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Hutton. Uh. The report of the Public and Active Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the tenth of August, be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Briefly, Chair, the final meeting of the Public and Active Transport Committee considered a presentation updating us on the delivery of two new terminals in our ferry network. The Shrida Council is all about delivering efficient and accessible transport networks so people can get home quicker and safer. And a key part of this is making sure that our ferry terminals are modern and fit for purpose, accessible, and that they have enough capacity. South Bank and Howard Smith Wharves are major destinations along the river, and the design of both of these terminals reflects this. Both in capacity and also ensuring that the stunning views of our city and the river are not obscured. Now, the South Bank upgrade will see a consolidation of two terminals into one. One consolidated South Bank ferry terminal will allow for easy transfer between ferry services, and it will provide a bigger waiting area off the promenade. At Howard Smith, sorry, uh Chair, at Howard Smith Wharves, the precinct is uh quite constrained because of the cliffs, so a river-based connection makes a lot of sense. This new terminal will also uh link into the New Farm Riverwalk and the Fortitude Valley area more broadly. If you're along the river at either South Bank or Howard Smith Wharves, you'll see all of the action taking place. It's incredibly exciting, and I'm really pleased to report that both of these terminals are on track for completion this year. In particular, the works happening at South Bank have been very, very well managed alongside construction of the Neville Bonner Bridge uh in a very busy, active section of the Brisbane River. Uh. The delivery of these new terminals are a celebration of local jobs, as I've said previously in this place, Chair, uh and local businesses, and it's a testament to the success of the Lord Mayor's local buy policy. The benefits of this local supply fabrication and construction include up to thirty-three local suppliers engaged to support both projects, a hundred and five local jobs supported across the project lifecycle, up to twenty new jobs being created as a result of this procurement. And um as of June twenty twenty one, there are seventeen apprentices working on both ferry terminal projects. So there are uh tradespeople getting their start, working on Brisbane City Council's ferry terminals, and I think that's a great outcome. Sun Engineering, the ferry terminal fabricator, is a local company that's been benefiting from our investment in infrastructure. These works have meant that they can invest in acquiring new plant and equipment, employing additional staff, and setting up a new shed within their facility at Carroll Park. Other local services and supply uh include security services, divers, engineering support, transport surveyors, plumbers, and Australian steelworkers and construction uh material suppliers. It includes a uh concrete supply company in Kelvin Grove and Sunnybank, roofing, plumbing and cladding services based out of Northgate and Salisbury, CCTV services and security services from Maruka, signage from Cooperoo, painting from Hammond, surveying from Milton and engineering support from Tingalpa. Chair, so there are a huge amount of suburbs in our city that are benefiting from uh the jobs created as a result of our investment in infrastructure. More than five and a half million people travel by ferry every year. We want this number to grow. We want to see more and more people returning to public transport, and hopping on a ferry is one of the best ways to take cars off the road. The Shrida Council wants people to have more options when it comes to travel in Brisbane, and our continued investment in new and upgraded terminals supports that vision. In addition to uh that update the committee received on new ferry terminals being built, I'd like to quickly update the chamber on some maintenance work that will be occurring across the ferry network. Minor maintenance on terminals will commence from mid-August twenty twenty one and will take place until mid-two thousand and twenty-two, staggered across the network. Now, these works include adjusting the uh ballast on the terminals themselves, on the the uh water side infrastructure, fender replacement, maintenance to uh the access hatches, signage, electrical work and uh painting. Now, these works will take place at many of the terminals up and down the river, including Brett's Wharf, New Farm Park, Sydney Street, Holman Street Maritime Museum, QT Gardens Point, North Key, Milton, Regatta and UQ St Lucia. So while there's lots of exciting work happening at South Bank and Howard Smith Wharves, um let me assure councillors that works are great and small are being undertaken across our network to keep our terminals speaker's fan. Um. And I'll leave further debate on the report to the chamber. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Is there any further debate? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. Um. Just regarding the ferry terminals project, we had a bit of discussion about this in the committee meeting on um last week, but obviously the committee meeting transcripts aren't open to the public, so I just thought I'd highlight again some of the concerns I raised there. One of the interesting topics of discussion was around the exact placement of the Howard Smith Wharves terminal, and um the presenter very helpfully pointed out that there were some limitations as to exactly where a terminal could be installed by virtue of um rocky outcrops um along the riverbank there. But uh it it is still quite disappointing that of all the places along the Howard Smith Wharves frontage that where a terminal could have been located, i- it's ended up being right in front of the one uh public, publicly accessible green space that fronts onto the river. So how the majority of Howard Smith Wharves has now been privatised and commercialised with um drinking and and outdoor dining. Um. And one small part of the the Wharves area was that grassy area with the tiered abeyment leading down to the river. And in the initial designs for Howard Smith Wharves and the initial commentary by councillor Cooper at the time, it was made clear that this was a a public space where people would be able to sit and picnic and and connect down to the river. And unfortunately, by locating the terminal directly in front of that space, we are partially undermining the the amenity and value of that public green space. So um the presenter rightly pointed out that the design of the terminal still mitigates this a little bit, and there will still be some views from that green area out to the river, depending on on the tide and and how high the terminal is rising. But overall, I think it's it's telling that rather than locating the terminal in front of one of the bar areas or dining areas, uh the Howard Smith Wharves developers were very keen to maintain the river views for their paying customers and and block off or diminish the river views and the connectivity for the um non-paying members of the public. And in particular, the I think it's it's also disappointing that 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 area was meant to be the And in particular, the, I think it's also disappointing that that area was meant to be the kayak landing point. I personally have never kayaked there, but I understand that was part of the the proposal in the initial Howard Smith Wharves development plan, was that that was the area where recreation vessels would be able to land. There's no commitment from Howard Smith Wharves developers that the members of the public will be able to freely use the commercial pontoon or jetty that they're still building. That's likely to be privatised and commercialised as well. So we seem to have lost the one genuinely publicly accessible point of the river along that Howard Smith Wharves frontage, and I think that's a little bit of a shame. More generally, I think the process around decision-making to prioritise construction of the Howard Smith Wharves terminal was quite problematic. Essentially, what happened here is that council made a deal with property developers. That's not controversial, that's on the public record. Brisbane City Council has a series of different plans and documents where it identifies its priorities for transport infrastructure. The local government infrastructure plan identified which terminals were the highest priority and where new terminals should be built. And there are fairly, I guess you might say, robust or detailed reports that Brisbane City Council produces in partnership with the state government identifying infrastructure priorities in terms of public transport. And Howard Smith Wharves wasn't on any of them. It was only afterwards, after Brisbane City Council made that deal with the property developers, that Howard Smith Wharves terminal was added to the local government infrastructure plan for ferry terminal network planning. And so essentially, what happened here is that there was no strong transport need from a citywide perspective to deliver a terminal at that location. And in fact, it's not really, really very far from the existing Eagle Street pier. And certainly, really, the only thing it connects to is the Howard Smith Wharves precinct unless you're heading further. Even if you're heading further up into the valley, it's not a particularly direct or convenient connection. So locating a terminal at that location is really just about getting people to Howard Smith Wharves. It doesn't serve a particularly large or broader resident population base or a broader range of businesses and commercial precincts. So really, that decision was made because the developers were willing to stump up a fair chunk of cash. And I get the logic of that. I understand the logic of council saying, well, if the developers are willing to pay for this, let's do a deal with them. But actually, the developers only contributed a comparatively small proportion of the funding of the terminal. I understand the total cost of the terminal was around twelve million, and my understanding is that the developers are contributing around three million dollars. So council is still bearing the large, sort of seventy-five percent proportion of the cost of this ferry terminal, even though it doesn't really serve a particularly high-value use for the broader transport network. There are several other locations along the inner-city riverfront where ferry or citycat terminals would have been better placed. And obviously, I've been quite vocal about the need for a new ferry terminal on the western side of West End, but that's not the only location. There are other spots along the river where a ferry terminal would have been a better use of money. And I think it's a little disappointing that the interests of a private developer have essentially trumped the broader public interest when it comes to transport planning. The, I think part of the concern in particular is that it seems, and perhaps councillor Murphy will correct me on this if I'm wrong, I really appreciate some clarity around this. It seems like the developers' three million dollar contribution for the ferry terminal is actually just infrastructure charges that they would otherwise be paying anyway. So it's not really a case that the developers are paying three million dollars additionally towards the cost of the ferry terminal. It's that they were going to have to pay council three million dollars anyway, and it would have been up to council to decide where that money got spent. And instead, the revenue collected via infrastructure charges has been redirected towards this local ferry terminal specifically to serve the interests of the private developers. If that's not correct, please do pull me up on that. But it does seem like this decision about the Howard Smith Wharves terminal has been primarily driven by the interests of private profit and those private developers, rather than the broader interests of the city as a whole. I've had quite a few residents, particularly from Kangaroo Point and West End, approach me and ask, why was this location prioritised for a terminal above all other potential locations along the river? And it seems the honest answer is that council wanted to bring more people to Howard Smith Wharves. And the reason it wanted to do that is because it was good for the developers and good for the business owners down there. Certainly, it doesn't seem like a particularly sensible location in terms of maximising public transport accessibility for higher-density populations that live along other stretches of the river. And I expect what will happen is that when we do finish the ferry network survey process, we'll find a lot of people on other parts of the river saying that they think their parts of the river are a higher priority for ferry and citycat connectivity. Really, I don't see why this location was prioritised, other than to keep the developers happy. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Sri. Is there further debate? I see no hands. Oh, sorry, councillor Johnson, my apologies, didn't see you down there. But you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Chair. Just extremely briefly. Look, I was happy for South Bank and Howard Smith Wharves ferry terminal upgrades until I heard that background from councillor Sri. And I appreciate the detail that's not in the report, and I can see why the LMP don't want it to be in the report. This was one of those sort of Captain Pick's type, we're just going to upgrade the Howard Smith Wharves and put one in there. But I just briefly wanted to say that councillor Sri is right. There are other parts of the city that would benefit from a citycat. And I just draw everyone's attention to the answers to the questions on notice today. And the ten tennis and wharf suburbs would make up, apart from councillor Cook and councillor Sri's area, hundreds and hundreds of residents have spoken up asking for citycats to come further upstream in my area. I support their request. And not only should we be fixing up ferry terminals within the existing network, but we should be undertaking feasibility studies to bring them further upriver.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? Councillor Murphy, write a reply.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. Just very briefly, councillor Sri made a number of points, and I just have to respond to those. So in terms of how a deal was reached with Howard Smith Wharves nominees, I can assure councillor Sri and assure the chamber that this was not an allocation of infrastructure charges towards the ferry terminal. Infrastructure charges, as you know, under state law are required to go to council as part of the development approval process and used for trunk infrastructure in the area. That is a process that happens under the Planning Act. The deal for the terminal itself was an additional deal over and above what Howard Smith Wharves nominees paid in infrastructure charges. And it was struck because we see the benefit of having a terminal in one of the busiest parts of our city that has been an incredibly successful commercial activation of what was a dead waterfront before we activated that precinct. And I'll just remind the chamber that this was a plan to activate the precinct that was opposed by the Labor Party in this chamber, was opposed by the State Labor Party. Now we see the State Labor Party members as some of the greatest users of Howard Smith Wharves. So we will always, we will always remind those opposite in this chamber of that fact whenever we talk about Howard Smith Wharves in this place, because it's been a tremendous success. Now, councillor Sri, you said that there would probably be, you know, major commercial drivers for for why people would want to get to Howard Smith Wharves. And just remind you that the Riverside Terminal and the Sydney Street Terminal are a very significant distance away from where the Howard Smith Terminal is. This provides direct river access to the thousands of residents that live in and around Fortitude Valley, who have always lived just excruciatingly close to the river, but have never had direct access to a terminal themselves, to citycat or cross-river ferry services in order to be able to access them. They've had, you know, in summer conditions, quite an excruciating walk down to either Sydney Street or into the CBD to get on to a citycat or a ferry at Riverside. So this actually provides thousands of residents access to a river service for the first time in their lives. So I would just say that I think councillor Howard would disagree with you in saying that there are not residents who live in and around the Howard Smith Wharves terminal that are very much looking forward to being able to take a lift down from where they live up on the cliffs down to the Howard Smith Wharves to then get on to a terminal there. And then just the final point, I guess the general point is that you're absolutely right, councillor Sri. This administration is not hostile to working with private developers to get good outcomes for our city. And that was the case with Howard Smith Wharves. We worked with the developer through a tender process and then through eventual construction to activate an underappreciated part of our city that was essentially a disused naval stores and dock area. And it has become one of the city's most vibrant nightlife precincts, a tremendous success of this administration's town planning history and record in this place. We're very proud of it, we're proud to talk about it, and we won't be ashamed about talking about it in this place.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. I'll now put the report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. Move on to the infrastructure report. Councillor Wines, please.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the tenth of August, twenty twenty one, be adopted.
Thank you, Ben. It's been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Maddick that the report of the Infrastructure Committee dated Tuesday, the tenth of August, twenty twenty one, be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. The report last week was about an item within the council called the PUP, the Public Utility Plan, which is a group of people who build relationships with other organisations in Brisbane that have knowledge of the items that are underground, the infrastructure items that are subsurface that sometimes get in the way of some of our larger projects. Can I offer that some of the things that you sort of find under there, the network of utilities can be complex, and I'm sure that all of us have experienced a time of frustration due to unexpected subsurface utilities being in some of our projects. And this body is designed to identify those in advance. So there is a process, you'll find it within the report, section four and then five, to give you an idea of what happens through the PUP. So basically, what they do is there's a process that involves four steps: identification, investigation, assessment and finalisation. And it's a process to ensure that major sewers, water, gas, electrical and telecommunications can be avoided while doing our project, so that they can be identified and taken into consideration before a project commences. Investigation process is administered in line with the project identification brief for the Australian standard AS five four eight eight, classification of subsurface utility information. As you could well, I am sure that we all can think of examples in our own wards where these items have frustrated or delayed projects. And we can in advance factor these in with opportunities for relocation always being there, but being a later option that we sometimes, we do often try to avoid. However, relocation is an option, how we try to move around those. Can I encourage councillors to read that and see this opportunity to streamline our processes in advance to make sure that our operation for project construction is easier? The PUP deals with a number of key organisations and has MOUs with some or often on all of these, the APA, Enerjex, Telstra and Urban Utilities, to make sure that our project operations run smoothly and we can get our road network working even better. I commend the report and the operation of the PUP to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Is there any further debate? I see no hands raised. Any other points you'd like to raise, councillor Wines?
Thank you, councillors.
I put the motion, all those in favour to receive this report, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, councillor Davis, please, the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the tenth of August, twenty twenty one, be adopted.
Seconded.
The Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report has been moved by councillor Davis, seconded by councillor Mackay, that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the tenth of August, twenty twenty one, be adopted. Is there any debate?
Well, thank you, Mr Chair. Last week, our committee presentation was an update on our solar installation programme. Up for some background, council has been installing solar systems on council-owned assets since we began the carbon neutral programme back in twenty sixteen. And as of last financial year, council had installed almost one point four kilowatts of solar capacity across more than seven thousand panels. It's estimated this produces enough to power six hundred and sixty homes and is the equivalent of removing approximately a thousand and twenty cars off the road. In addition, council has installed one hundred and fifty-eight kilowatts at libraries and depots comprising four hundred and twenty-eight solar panels. We also have a number of council programmes to support community groups and clubs with solar installation and other ways to be more energy efficient, including the Lord Mayor's Sustainability Grants and the Resilient Club Support Programme. Last week, councillor Griffiths asked how many clubs have received support through the Resilient Club Support Programme. While this doesn't sit within my portfolio, but with councillor Howard, I can advise that more than one hundred clubs benefited from this programme so far, and this programme is still underway benefiting community clubs across Brisbane. Of those clubs, more than one hundred clubs who have benefited from the programme so far, thirty-two have received solar installations. The Brisbane Sustainability Agency also partners with community groups to provide assistance applying for the Australian Government's Energy Efficient Communities Programme grants. Mr Chair, the Shrima Council has a strong plan moving forward, investing more than twenty-three million dollars over the next four years to delivering new energy-efficient projects, as well as gearing up to install council's largest solar installation at the Brisbane Metro Depot in Rochdale to help power fully electric fleet. As the chamber knows, we are leading the charge, being the largest carbon-neutral government in Australia and have been since twenty seventeen. And even the state government has recognised the work we've done on their new climate action website, acknowledging the work we've done to maintain carbon-neutral status, reducing emissions and to help local communities build climate resilience. I'd just like to thank again the manager for Water, Energy and Environment Systems for her informative presentation. I commend the report to the chamber, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you very much, councillor Davis. Are there any speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. Just want to give my interpretation of the presentation given last week. And thank you, councillor Davis, for answering that question that a hundred clubs have benefited from the solar programme. That means five hundred clubs, over five hundred clubs are yet to benefit, so we have a lot more work to do with that. Disturbingly, I wasn't so impressed by the officer's presentation. The officer wouldn't answer questions. It's very rare that you have an officer who won't answer questions. So that was of concern to me. And I'm not sure the officer's instructed not to answer questions or wasn't capable of answering questions. But as an elected member, I expect officers and managers to be able to answer questions. In relation to this solar programme, we know with our carbon credits that we haven't been doing so well. We know that we're purchasing at least thirty-three percent of our carbon credits from overseas. And that's a big amount that we're purchasing from overseas when we have the opportunity of purchasing those credits locally or in Brisbane or in Australia. We know that if we had a programme like Fogo, we could actually be selling carbon credits to the community or to businesses so that we could actually be creating a carbon-neutral space and actually helping improve where we are. So I think rather than patting ourselves on the back with this programme, what we need to be doing is actually looking at where we can do better. Now, I recognise that the LMP, this must come as some embarrassment to this LMP administration because they've got to look at their federal colleagues who seem to have no climate policy, who seem to have no policy on where we're going with the environmental carbon. And they continue to have no policy. And I would call on this little group, this little group in Brisbane City Council, actually to go and lobby your federal members and say, actually, it's time now to do something about carbon. We've had the report about how appallingly Australia's doing. We've had the report about how appallingly Australia's doing. Brisbane City Council seems to be making some advances. We need to be doing better. But surely your job as councillors, as LMP councillors, is to get your colleagues, your la-dite colleagues into the game and actually get them to do something in terms of where we're going as a community and a world in relation to carbon. Thank you.
You have enough food.
Mr Chair?
Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. It gives me great pleasure to speak on this committee report and commend councillor Davis and also her predecessor in the portfolio, councillor Fiona Cunningham, for the work that they have continued to do to create a cleaner, greener Brisbane. And it is quite fascinating to hear Labour's approach on this. So they talked about other levels of government wanting to do their part. And the state government recently released a initiative or a paper on this. And basically what they said is, do what Brisbane's doing. That was their approach. Do what Brisbane's doing. Yet if you listen to councillor Griffiths, it's all terrible. It's all terrible that we're the largest carbon neutral organisation. They can't help but nitpick about the achievements of this administration and its predecessors. And yet take a swipe at the federal government on the way through, yet not acknowledging the great work that has been done.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order?
Yeah, just like to claim to be misrepresented.
Thank you. Hold that till the end.
Thank you.
We know that there is not a state government department that can claim to be carbon neutral like Brisbane City Council is. And in fact, I'm not aware of any government departments of any size anywhere in Australia that can claim the same thing. So we are leading by example. And, you know, other people like to talk about it, particularly labour governments and labour administrations like to talk about it. We're just getting on and doing it. And the fact that Brisbane City Council is the largest government organisation in Australia is something we should be proud of. But it's also something where state governments across the country should hang their head in shame. It would take one government department to become carbon neutral, to become the largest government organisation in Australia. Can you imagine if Queensland Health became carbon neutral? They would suddenly become probably the largest carbon neutral organisation in Australia. Yet, no. The state government's approach is to write a paper. And the paper says, do what council's doing, do what Brisbane City Council's doing. Well, we're going to continue leading the way. And we're not going to spend our time talking about targets that may or may not be achieved in 2050. We're not going to spend our time talking about who's got the biggest target. What we're going to do is actually get on with the practical initiatives that make a difference. Debate on targets hasn't saved a single carbon emission. There's not a single carbon emissions that's been saved. In fact, there's been a lot of hot air generated in debate. We're just getting on to doing it. And we'll continue to do that. We planted 2 million trees in a four year period. That was an amazing achievement. It was interesting. I saw a post recently from the Sydney City Council. Now, as we know, this is an inner-city lefty council that really prides itself in things like tree planting. And speaking from memory here, I think they patted themselves on the back for planting 15,000 trees in the last few years, 15,000. We planted 2 million trees in just a four-year period. So we are really leading by example, not just for other councils, but for other governments as well. And we will continue to do so because it's what we really believe in. We believe in creating a cleaner, greener Brisbane. And whether it's our investment in these carbon reduction initiatives, our investment in offsets, or our support for projects like Brisbane Metro, New Green Bridges, which are all about reducing emissions and getting people out of their cars and into alternative forms of transport, we will continue to lead the way. And so to hear councillor Griffiths, you know, his attempt to try and poo-poo what had been done was just sad. It was really sad. And then he couldn't help but having a swipe at the federal government when he's been very silent at the lack of action by state government departments who have not yet become carbon neutral. That would be the first thing I would do if I was in charge of a state government and wanting to reduce my carbon footprint. I'd say every government department has to be carbon neutral. That's step one. Yet they haven't taken that basic step. So, you know, we'll continue to lead the way and we'll continue to be Australia's leading council and government organisation when it comes to our carbon reduction programmes and our offsetting programmes. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Griffiths, your point of misrepresentation?
Ah, yes. Thank you, Mr Chair. My point of dispute is that I was talking about the LMP federally and that they've done so little. And this council and this Lord Mayor has done so little in getting them to do anything. And he just reaffirmed that.
Not an opportunity for debate. But thank you councillor Griffiths. Councillor Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak just briefly on the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report. And I thank councillor Sri for his insightful observations last week. If I can't be on the committee, then councillor Davis, I'm going to comment on it in the chamber. And I was watching today as well about the water. So I'll definitely have some comments on that next week. But solar power, look, there's a few problems here with what the Lord Mayor has just said. But I want to start by saying the percentage of power that council actually gets from solar-powered assets on our buildings is tiny compared to council's overall electricity spent. I mean, just last year, council installed 2,376 kilowatts of solar capacity, and that's 7,000 panels. Now, that's great. But it is a tiny, tiny proportion of council's electricity needs. Council actually purchases 47,000, nearly 48,000 megawatts of renewable energy each year. So the balance is not right at this point. It is a great thing that we are looking at solar power, but we are not looking at enough of it. And we're definitely not looking at it in the right places. And this is the point that I would like to make today. Despite multiple requests by me over the years, Brisbane City Council refuses to install solar-powered lights in parks, in dog facilities and through public walkways. Now, in some cases, there are reasons why that cannot happen. For example, there are trees. So you've got to have sun shining on the solar panels to light the public lighting. But in the majority of cases where I make the request, it's open space and it would be suitable for solar-powered lighting. And yet Brisbane City Council just says no. And that's because the lighting team at council say no. And again, I mean, because we had an excellent presentation from them a few weeks ago where they said lots of things, but they don't do the things necessarily that they're talking about. But one of the things they did confirm there was they don't put in solar lights. So Brisbane City Council is fundamentally missing significant and reduce our use of electricity. And we should be looking at street lighting, park lighting, dog park lighting and other public lighting where solar power would be useful. And the fact that dog parks in big wide open spaces are still having electricity lines put into them is outrageous in my view. And I think that it undermines the small but good work council is doing because of its failure to look at putting these assets in, into our public spaces. And this is not a new request. These requests have been made many times over the years by myself and other councillors. And every now and then council will do one somewhere, but then it'll say to you, no, no, you can't have it. And no, no, we don't do them. So fundamentally, putting some solar panels on top of some bus depots, tick. Putting it on top of the libraries that council owns, tick. Not putting it, not having a policy that actually addresses all of council's assets and making a deliberate decision to change behaviour and to change the way we manage our public assets, that's a failure of policy. That's also a failure of leadership because the Lord Mayor's debate today was all about, we'll do the practical things necessary to be a solar and a sustainable city. Well, he just refuses to consider it in some places.
And he won't measure it.
Won't measure it either, I agree. So, you know, if we're really looking at solar power as a strategy for our council, which I think is a great one, absolutely. Not only that, as I've said previously, it should be mandatory in new building standards that all buildings have solar panels in them. Now, that would require action from the Queensland state government as well as Brisbane City Council. But certainly, council should be looking at a wider range of assets for solar power. And we should have a policy in place to look at putting them in, in these everyday projects that are happening in our wards. I know that my community would strongly support more solar power being installed. And I urge councillor Davis, Davis, sorry, as the new chairperson, because previous chairpersons have ignored this as well, to look at more solar-powered assets so that we can reduce our reliance on electricity and create a more sustainable city.
Thank you councillor Johnson. Is there any further debate? Councillor Sri, I see your hand raised.
Thanks Chair. Just briefly, I heard the Lord Mayor's comments and listened with interest. I just wanted to point out for anyone who's listening online or maybe is reading the minutes of these transcripts later, that there can be a lot of greenwashing around claims about carbon neutrality. And it's really important to look at what emissions are being counted and what emissions are maybe conveniently being left off the balance sheet. And it's important to understand that although Brisbane City Council claims to be carbon neutral, a lot of the projects and programmes it undertakes are outsourced to private contractors. And some of that work simply isn't captured in what you'd call the carbon accounting. So when different divisions in council are managing their emissions or counting, yeah, counting the tonnes of carbon that have been emitted in association with certain projects, maybe in some cases, some of those private contractor emissions are being captured. But in a lot of cases, they're not being fully accounted for. So it's easy for the council departments themselves to claim carbon neutrality because a lot of the big energy intensive work that council does is actually undertaken by private contractors. So you're outsourcing to private construction companies, to private transport providers, et cetera, that those emissions from all the, say, the big trucks or the earth-moving equipment involved in a park redesign, none of those are fully captured and accounted for as part of the council's carbon accounting programme. The council will claim that they are and claim that they're being offset. But when you drill down into the detail, that's strictly not true. I did also just want to pull up the Lord Mayor on his comment about tree planting because the Lord Mayor highlighted that council has planted around 2 million trees over the past four years. But it's really important to highlight that the council doesn't include in that how many trees they've removed.
Yes.
Or how many trees have died as a result of failure to water the trees or properly maintain them. And so that figure of 2 million trees, that's not a net increase in the number of trees. That's leaving out all the trees that have been removed. And we know, for example, that council often removes really large trees that provide a lot of canopy cover and significant ecosystem services. And depending on the project, those large trees might just be often just replaced with very small saplings. And in many cases, those saplings are only born once one year. And so if then we have a dry period, those saplings die. And I'm aware, for example, there were quite a few trees removed as part of the Litton Road widening project. Smaller trees were planted to replace those large trees that were removed. And now some of those smaller trees have died. So it's important to treat with some scepticism the mayor's claims about the number of trees being planted. And I don't think Sydney council needs me to defend them. But it's also worth pointing out that inner-city Sydney is a very different environment to outer suburban areas like Pullevale and Callanvale, et cetera. And if you think about the region that inner-city Sydney, that council covers, it's really sort of similar to the Gabba Ward and Central Ward. And we certainly haven't planted 15,000 trees in the Gabba Ward and Central Ward over the past four years. And it's a shame that we're not doing a better job of planting more trees in those inner-city areas and in the city as a whole. But I just want to encourage anyone who's listening to this debate to just treat some of these claims from the administration with a bit of caution because they're obviously keen to boost their green credentials. And fair play to them. Council is doing some work really well. And there are some really good projects that the council offices have been championing. But unfortunately, some of this stuff is a little bit of greenwashing spin. And we need to be sophisticated enough to tell the two apart. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Sri. Is there any further debate? Councillor Davis, would you like to reply?
Well, thank you very much, Mr Chair. And I thank the councillors for their contribution. But I think it's abundantly clear that certainly councillor Griffiths and councillor Sri just cannot stand the fact that it's under an LMP administration, that we are taking practical action to tackle climate change and to create a clean, green and sustainable Brisbane. To councillor Sri's comments, I would say that our offsets are certified by an independent national agency. And it also includes, in terms of our presentation to them, areas right across council. So all of our business operations and including external contractors. So I think some of the debate here today is really about...
Point of order Chair?
Point of order councillor Sri.
Thanks. Will councillor Davis take a quick question?
Councillor Davis, did you take a question from councillor Sri? Sorry councillor Sri, no. Councillor Davis?
The councillors come into this place and make comments about our credentials in this space. And our credentials are strong. We continue to work well. We have very firmly focused on taking practical steps to ensure that we do tackle the impacts of climate change. We are very proud of the fact that we are a carbon neutral organisation and have been since 2017. There's only one organisation larger, and that's Telstra, that can claim to be successful in this space in terms of carbon neutrality for an organisation as Brisbane City Council. So I for one, am very proud to be part of an administration working so hard in order to do the right thing, to make our city more sustainable. To councillor Griffiths' comments about our council officers, I'd just like to say that I just found those comments to be really unnecessary. In the meeting last week, councillor, I felt that you were indeed quite rude to the council officer who offered to provide you with the detail that you wanted. She just didn't have it at hand on the spot. So I just really think that you should think twice about what you say to council officers.
Point of order, Mr Chair?
Point of order councillor Griffiths?
Claim to be misrepresented.
Okay. And may I remind you councillor Davis to direct comments through the chair?
Thank you, Mr Chair. And through you to councillor Griffiths, it was unnecessary to speak to the council officer in that regard. It was a wonderful presentation. The officer was happy to take on notice the questions from councillor Griffiths. And there was no need to almost attack her in the manner in which he did on the day. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Councillor Griffiths, you claim misrepresentation?
Oh, look, I actually find that offensive. And if councillor Davis had wanted to raise that last week in the meeting, that's when she should do it. Those allegations are offensive. It's not true. And it's on video. So they can watch what the question was that I asked the officer. The officer wouldn't answer the question. That's all I want to say. But there's no need to be untrue about or make false allegations.
Councillor Griffiths, that's enough. Thank you. We've now moved the motion for the vote on the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no and raise your hands. Are there any abstentions? I declare it carried. Thank you. Councillor Martz, the City Standards, Community Health and Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards, Community Health and Safety Committee, as it was named last week, dated the 9th of August 2021, be adopted.
It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the City Standards, Community Health and Safety Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 10th of August 2021, be adopted. Councillor Marks.
My apologies, I had the 9th of August down. I just want to, before I get to the committee report, I just want to mention about the curbside collection with regard to retirement villages that was mentioned earlier on in the chamber's debate. Look, retirement villages are rated as a category four, which is considered commercial in nature. So obviously there are some minor exceptions on variations on rate processes. However, retirement villages are mainly serviced by the commercial waste sector and not we don't, that's not to say that we don't do some waste servicing of them, but the vast majority are done through the commercial waste operators. So council does not get involved in how rate villages charge or recharge their residents for services provided that comes under the state government. Of course, as we've always said in this chamber, in this committee, should anyone require waste vouchers to give to any of their residents, they're freely available at your ward office to hand out as you see fit and that hasn't changed. To the committee itself, we had a very long and informative presentation from our, about conservation education at the Brisbane Botanic Gardens. As always, the curator of that is a very well experienced, very well versed and very passionate about his role. And luckily, we didn't have a lot of time left for any petitions or general business at the end because the presentation is so well received and it was very interesting. So I'm happy to leave any further debate to the chamber.
My apologies. Are there any further speakers? None? We'll move the report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard, the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report, please.
Chair, I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 10th of August 2021, be adopted.
That report has been moved seconded by councillor Landers. Thank you. Is there any debate?
Thank you Chair. I just would like to say that last week we had a fantastic presentation from the wonderful Louise Bazina, the artistic director of Brisbane Festival, and of course Charlie Kush, their CEO. It is always fantastic when they come to join us and the committee just was mesmerised by what they are going to have on offer in September. So we had the opportunity to learn firsthand of all the incredible events planned for this year as part of the 2022 Brightley Brisbane Festival, including a stunning art boat, which will be moored at North Shore in Hamilton, something quite close to your heart Chair, I imagine, featuring an illuminated sky castle with performances with airship orchestra. The art boat will set sail on the Brisbane River, travelling between Kangaroo Point, South Bank and its home in North Shore. We are also very proud to support Brisbane Festival in delivering the First Nations fashion, Walking in Two Worlds. Walking in Two Worlds has been created specifically for the Brisbane Festival by Grace Lilian Lee and will be presented in the piazza at South Bank. This project is an opportunity for young Indigenous models to be mentored by some of Australia's leading models. New designers will be presenting their fashion creations and it will culminate in a choreographed production featuring live music and a video component. And of course, the Lord Mayor and I are very proud to be partnering with Brisbane Festival to deliver street serenades again this year. Street serenades will once again be going out to 190 suburbs after a citywide call out for hosts. Performances will be held in 109 parks, seven car parks, 20 cul-de-sacs, one pool, 26 businesses, eight schools with sporting ovals, one lookout and some sporting facilities and community centres. The Street Serenades programme will cover a wide range of musical styles and include the Queensland Ballet, Christine Anu, Babuska, Camerata and the Seven Sopranos. It will also feature talks by author Trent Dalton, who created the Street Serenades musical programme. Full details and locations of the performances will be available in late August. And Chair, this is just a small taste of the incredible programme on offer next month. So I encourage everyone to hop, skip or jump to your computer and book your tickets now so that you don't miss out. And I recommend the report to the chamber.
Thank you. Councillor Howard, is there any debate? Councillor Sri.
Thanks Chair. I'm really excited about the Street Serenades programme and I want to thank and congratulate council for, again, supporting this project. I did want to highlight that it seems like some of those concerts are being supported in sort of partnership arrangements with local community groups. And that in some cases, those community groups are coming back to the ward offices to ask for support. So for example, my ward office is loaning P A systems for a few of the Brisbane Festival street serenade gigs in my electorate. Or that's our plan anyway. And we're happy to do that. But I do just want to highlight that maybe that means council needs to be putting a little bit more funding and support to the projects in the future because it's obvious that they're not quite fully funded at the moment because those gigs are still coming back to ward offices and requesting other forms of support. So perhaps there's an opportunity there for the funding for the street serenade gigs to be increased in future. There's a lot of potential with this. I think doing more gigs in parks and public spaces is really, really valuable and a really positive idea. But we see time and again, unfortunately, that governments often undervalue the arts and they'll allocate a couple of hundred thousand dollars to a festival, even though that festival delivers millions of dollars worth of value back to the citizenry. And it always pains me a little bit to compare how much we spend on major infrastructure projects compared to how much we spend on the arts. And I think certainly Brisbane Festival and projects like Street Serenades deserve a lot more public funding. The return on investment, the cost benefit is through the roof. It's really great value for money. And at a time like this, it's particularly important for council to be supporting live entertainment and the performing arts. We know that that sector has been hit particularly hard by Covid. There are a lot of musicians and performing artists who still can't get paid gigs due to capacity and venue restrictions associated with Covid. So the more money that council puts into this programme, the more jobs council is saving. And it's interesting that we don't seem to talk about festivals like Brisbane Festival in terms of job creation figures. I often hear council talking about, oh, this new bridge project will create this many hundred jobs or this new intersection upgrade will create 10, 15 jobs or whatever. A much more significant proportion of the money invested in the arts actually goes into effectively labour and job creation. So if council is looking for ways to generate employment and create more job opportunities, putting more funding into the arts would be a really good thing. And so I just urge all councillors and particularly the mayor to think a bit more about whether there is more that council could be doing to support the arts during this particularly tough time. Allocate a bit more funding towards events like Brisbane Festival so that they can hire more musicians and performing artists and keep more people in. I can basically allow more people to be able to afford their rent, which at the moment is becoming a really dire proposition for many in that industry. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Sri. Are there any other speakers? I see no hands raised. Councillor Howard, would you like to sum up?
Thank you Chair and councillor Sri, I can't agree with everything that you've just said. I mean, Brisbane Festival is just one of the many events that Brisbane City Council and the Shrinna Council particularly supports. We have festivals and events right across Brisbane. In fact, I'm very familiar that the Tenerife Festival will be happening later this year. Many of them, many of them have suffered from Covid. And we continue to support those local festivals, those local events. The Brisbane Festival is well supported by the Shrinna Council. It's well supported by all of us. And I for one am only too happy to support some of my local organisations, some of my local creatives that will be part of the Street Serenades and however I can do that as a local council. I think it was one of the things that was raised within the committee was the importance of local councillors getting behind the Brisbane Festival. It's about supporting our local artists and that's what we're doing. The Brisbane Festival in itself is supporting local. It did it last year. It's doing it again this year. And we as councillors really have a role to play in making sure that we're supporting our local street serenades. So councillor Sri, thanks for your comments, but I just would like councillor Cumming, I'll take that. Councillor Cumming.
Let the speaker speak without being interrupted. Councillor Sri, do you have a point of order?
Yeah, I just wondered if councillor Howard would take one more quick clarificatory question.
Councillor Howard, councillor Sri would like to ask you a question. Would you like to take it?
No, I'm nearly finished, sorry. Can I just say, can I just say that we will be writing out to the councillors to let them know where those street serenades. It's, I think that the Brisbane Festival is just finalising some of those serenades. And once that's in place, as we undertook in the committee, we will be letting councillors know where they are. So thank you for everyone's commitment to that and I look forward to seeing all of you at your local street serenades. And I recommend the report to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Howard. The Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Any noes? I declare that carried. Thank you. Councillor Huang, the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee report, please.
Yeah, thank you Mister Chair. I move that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting held on Tuesday, 10th of August 2021, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. The report has been moved by councillor Huang, seconded by councillor Owen, that the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 10th of August 2021, be adopted. Is there any debate?
Thank you Mister Chair. At last week's committee presentation, it was from our city resilience branch on Christmas, preparing us for storm season. Brisbane has a local disaster management group, which is chaired by the Lord Mayor. This group met at the end of the last severe weather season in April and will meet again in October this year. In the meantime, council staff.
No, rotary's all not the thing.
Sorry.
Please councillor Howard, can you turn off?
Sorry. Sorry everyone.
Yep, sure. Well, in the meantime, council staff have undertaken training and exercising to prepare them for operating in the local disaster coordination centre. The Brisbane City State Emergency Services Unit has been training individuals and teams in temporary repairs, working at heights and fluff boat operations. Further exercises are planned to assure council preparedness ahead of this year's storm season. On behalf of the Lord Mayor, I would like to put on the record that our thanks to the hardworking council staff and volunteers who work to keep us safe. Mister Chair, we also considered the banking and investment report for June 2021 in the meeting. And I'll leave the further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Any other speakers, please? Councillor Huang, do you want to say anything else? Might reply?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Huang's moved the report of the Finance Administration and Small Business Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 10th of August 2021. All those in favour, please say aye and raise your hands. Any opposed, please say no, raise your hands. I declare that motion carried. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Adams.
Thank you Mister Chair and I would like to put forward a petition on behalf of councillor Cunningham for the naming of a local park.
Thank you. Any other petitions? Councillor Cumming.
Yes, Mister Chair, I've got an e petition about a development of a storage complex, 300 Tingle Road, Winham, and also a hard copy of the same petition.
Thank you councillor Cumming. Any other petitions? Councillor Cook.
Thank you. I've got a petition for a development application on Riding Road, Dumoral.
Thank you councillor Cook. Any other petitions? May I have a motion, please, for the receipt of those petitions?
Mister Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. Being moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Griffiths, that all petitions presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Thank you. Councillors, general business. Are there any statements required as a result of an office of independent assessor or councillor ethics committee order? No one rising? General business. Councillor Owen.
Thank you Mister Chair. I would like to speak tonight on two matters, the Vietnamese History Museum and also the St John's Aquatic Centre. So for many of you who have been watching the Olympics in recent weeks, you will have noticed that there has been an absolutely wonderful following by the younger generation of our athletes. And predominantly, many of them were linked to the efforts in the pool. And it was wonderful to actually be at St John's Amherican College in Forest Lake recently for their Foundation Day celebrations and to know that they are planning ahead to make sure that the future generation swimmers in our local community can go there and be part of this aquatic centre that they are proposing to build. Now, the announcement was only made on that day and so the whole project is in its infancy. But I take my hat off to the entire school community and the board who are behind this project because it is a wonderful project, not only for the students of the school, but there will be a component of community use. And I know that the people of Forest Lake, Heathwood, Polara and Durland Della, the surrounding suburbs, will find great benefit from this local facility. And I know that particularly from a school-based perspective, that we will have a generation of swimmers coming through that will have ideal training opportunities and also they will have the capacity to be there at their school at the same time as doing their training. And I can see that this will become a sports academy excellence programme as well because I know that that's what many young swimmers are also looking for. It's quite different to my days when I was a young swimmer. It was 5am in the morning and basically diving into a freezing cold pool. These days, a lot of our squad swimmers locally have heated pools that they are in and it is a big difference. And I know that the dedication, effort and time and energy that goes into training, not only just for swimming but for all sports, is something that not only teaches our young people discipline, but it also builds a sense of a bond between coaches and between fellow competitors. I'd also like to reflect on the lovely ladies who joined me in City Hall on Sunday for High Tea, who are the Miss Vietnam representatives. And thank you, Lord Mayor, for your inviting them to City Hall for this High Tea as part of their approach to raising funds for the Vietnamese Immigration History Museum. Now, I know that many of our wonderful young ladies, many of them are second or third generation Vietnamese boat people. But I can tell you, Lord Mayor, that we had one of our former student ambassadors in the group and also one young lady who had spent time in a refugee camp in Malaysia after escaping Vietnam as well by boat. So it is very much a modern day issue as well as a previous era issue from the 70s when it first started up. But I would like to convey my heartfelt thanks to all of the Vietnamese community for the work and the contribution that they continue to give back to our city of Brisbane and for their showing their appreciation of being part of our Brisbane family. So they asked me to personally convey through you, Mister Chair, to the Lord Mayor their thanks for being hosted in City Hall. And I know that the judging will be very difficult on the 5th of September, but we do wish them all well and certainly we are supportive of the efforts to build up that history behind their travels from Vietnam to here in our city of Brisbane. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Owen. General business. The speaker is councillor Sri.
Thanks Chair. Just wanted to speak really briefly about what's happening in Afghanistan and then also talk about the much more local issue of public toilets. We've all obviously been saddened to see what's been happening over there in the last few days and some really shocking and tragic footage and. And I'm sure everyone in this chamber is empathising deeply with the plight of the Afghani people. I I just wanted to place on the record and highlight that right now there are a lot of Afghani refugees living in our community, living in in Brisbane, who are still on temporary visas, on bridging visas, or in fact have no current visa. Um, this is a function of many years of sort of gaps in federal immigration policy where people were initially placed on temporary visas and then those visas expired and weren't renewed. Um, so I'm not sure of the exact number, I don't think anyone other than the immigration department knows the the exact number. But there are a lot of people who fled Afghanistan for fear of persecution by the Taliban, who are who are now living in our city, but who don't have permit refugee status here and who who don't have that stability to live here long term. Um, technically, the government could return them to Afghanistan at any time. And so I urge and encourage all councillors to do whatever it is within your power to elevate that cause and and to amplify the call for any Afghani origin people who are currently living in Brisbane to be granted refugee status, so that they can remain here and not live in fear of being deported into a dangerous situation. Um, might leave my comments there on that one. Just really briefly on, well, actually, no, I'm not going to be too brief. I want to want to state the case about this because it's it's been bugging me for a while and hopefully the Lord Mayor and councillor Davis are going to pay attention.
What a point of order, Mister Chair.
Point of order councillor Adams.
Following meeting local laws, you need to state at the beginning of your speech what you're going to speak about. Councillor Sri said he was speaking about Afghani refugees. He needs to now cease his speaking if he's going to something else because he didn't indicate that.
A minute, please, thank you. I heard councillor Sri say that he wanted to talk about public toilets and I believe he's about to address that particular issue.
I am, thank you Chair, and I thank the deputy mayor to focus on her job and not try to do the chair's job for him. Um, I was gonna highlight particularly for the benefit of councillor Davis and for the Lord Mayor. Brisbane is now falling behind a little bit in terms of accessibility to public toilets in inner city areas in particular, but throughout the city as a whole. Um, part of the problem is is that the the general standard is in terms of desired standards of service and accessibility. Um, expect that residents would be able to walk as much as a kilometre or two kilometres to get to a public toilet. Uh, that's not a reasonable expectation and that doesn't support active transport, doesn't support walkable neighbourhoods. I've had a couple of examples in my ward recently, one is along Riverside Drive and another has been in Highgate Hill, where the initial advice from the news team has been that they don't think a public toilet is necessary in a particular park because there's another public toilet a kilometre away. Um, and I would just urge councillor Davis and the mayor and and the relevant officers to look a bit more closely at how these public spaces are actually being used and recognise that even if a park is a little bit smaller than an outer suburban park, it's still getting a lot of use and would still benefit greatly from the addition of a public toilet. There have been examples in my ward where I've been willing to allocate money from my suburban enhancement fund and say, I'd like to spend this on a new public toilet in the park. And council has said, oh, that that a park of that size doesn't require a public toilet. I think that's the wrong way to approach this question. I think we need to recognise that in dense inner city areas where there's literally thousands of people living within a few square kilometres, it makes sense to have public toilets um in close proximity to public spaces and and for them to be more accessible. And I um I would just ask councillor Davis to maybe consider talking to your officers about whether it's time to review those standards and guidelines within city plan and within the parks planning um guides because I think they're a little bit out of date. Um, it's it's not uncommon for residents to raise this concern with me, particularly I hear from older residents who say they would love to go down to the park with their grandkids, but either they need to use the loo or their grandkids needs to use the loo and it becomes a bit of a drama and and is a genuine barrier to being able to access and enjoy those public spaces. So council spends a lot of money maintaining our parks, making them lovely and attractive. But if there's no loo, that ma- makes them a lot less accessible for a lot of people. And I would suggest that if.
Councillor Cook, you have a point of order?
Yes, um would councillor Sri take a question?
Yeah, sure.
Sri, will you take a question for councillor Cook?
Um councillor Sri, do you recall that?
Councillor Cook.
Yes, can you hear me now, Mister Chair?
Through through the chair, yes.
Uh, yes, through you, Mister Chair. Um councillor Sri, are you aware that this council voted against implementing a public toilet strategy for the city to review these sorts of things um back in June 2021?
Yes, I recall that councillor Cook. Um, and I guess I'm a little pragmatic in that I'm I'm now just starting to talk about the inner city because I I can see that the administration's a bit reluctant to open up these conversations about the whole city. I think I think there is a problem here and um this isn't, this isn't something that has to be party political. This isn't something that has to be, you know, the LMP shouldn't be opposing this just because it's an issue that Labour and Greens councillors are raising. There's a genuine problem where um the population has increased dramatically. There's a lot more usage of many public spaces than there used to be. Um, but the provision of public toilets is still quite patchy. Um, in particular, I know that a lot of toilets don't have change tables and and those basic facilities um to support young parents. It's really, I guess, um a simple thing that this council could be doing to improve access to our public spaces and um public parks. And I'm disappointed that the the standards seem to be so one size fits all. So even if the council doesn't want to have a comprehensive review of um public toilets across the whole city, at least look at those standards for parks and and maybe take a more nuanced approach and recognise that uh if there's a park where a lot of people are gathering and where the local councillor says there's a need for a toilet and the local councillor is willing to allocate their discretionary budget towards paying for a toilet, um it doesn't make sense for news officers to be opposing that and simply saying, oh, the park is too small to host a public toilet. Um, I know that toilets can sometimes cause controversy where they're, if they're closer to residential properties, but the reality in the inner city is that everything's close together. Um, and the mere fact that there's a house within 100 metres of a proposed toilet site shouldn't be a reason for not installing a toilet there. Um, that's just one of the realities of life in the inner city and and we need to be more willing to locate facilities close to where people are actually living and where they're going to be used because otherwise people can't go to the loo and then I get complaints about people um relieving themselves in garden beds. And that's not something that the council officers should have to deal with, it's easily avoided. If we build more public toilets and we provide them in places where people need them, they're going to stop peeing in the garden and surely that's a common sense improvement we can make to our city. Thanks.
Thanks councillor Sri. Any other general business? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I'd just rise to speak briefly on the LMP's cuts to mowing services. Um, one of the most important functions that Brisbane City Council undertakes uh is mowing around our um public areas. Um, it was with some dismay that I was briefed by then Asset Services South, now called PPI, um the operational part of council that looks after my ward and several others, um that Brisbane City Council had cut its uh mowing schedules by one uh across the whole year. Um, the outcome of that meant there would be no mowing of any parks or roadsides in July. Um, so, you know, it's been since mid-June essentially, um since any mowing was done uh in many parts of my ward. Gets worse though because uh then councils decided there's actually no mowing happening in August either. Mowing of parks does not start again until next week. So it will have been two months where this council is not mowing the grass in um Brisbane City Council parks and uh on roadsides, two months. Now, driving around my ward, um grass is out of control. It's up above the copper's log, so it's more than knee-high in most of my parks. We've had lockdowns where we've had more people in parks than ever before and yet this council has decided that it can't mow in parks. Um, I don't know why the mowing schedule was cut. Um, I don't know why there was no mowing undertaken in July. Um, but the outcome of then cutting uh mowing for the first three weeks of August has had catastrophic impacts on our public spaces. It demonstrates that this um part of council is being neglectful of the basic issues of maintaining our public spaces. Um, it creates, it creates a fundamental problem in my area where then mowing never catches up. Um, and mowing isn't done properly around the edges of parks, around roadsides. Um, and it is absolutely outrageous that council is cost-cutting when it comes to mowing. The state of mowing in parks is appalling. It will have been two months or even longer in some parks since council's done any mowing in public spaces. This council should be ashamed of itself, cutting funding in that area while giving the Lord Mayor millions and millions and millions of dollars uh for marketing, for grants in his own name, and they cannot mow the grass. It's there for every single resident in Brisbane to see and the reason is the LNP, as they like to call themselves, Shriner Council, has cut grass mowing in July and August. Shame on you.
Thank you councillor Johnston, is there, are there any other speakers in general business?
Uh, point of order.
Councillor Sri.
Uh, point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Um, just to check, are we not putting the motions back on debate?
Uh, at the conclusion of the day's business, yes.
Well, that's now, you don't want to close general business, do you? Because that's.
I didn't close general business councillor Johnston, I called councillors free if you were paying attention.
All right, I'll um just wanted to speak really um about space for biodiversity and habitat for wildlife in urban areas. I've I had the pleasure of visiting the little town of Jimna recently, I think it's in the Somerset Regional Council area, could be wrong. Um, but it was, it was lovely to see how much wildlife there was in close proximity to residential homes. Um, a much more diverse range of small birds, of insects, reptiles, et cetera. And I was struck by the fact that e- even in the in the council parks and in spaces closer to where people live, the council had done a better job of preserving a diverse range of habitats. Um, this is something that's probably going to be of interest to a lot of councillors. But Brisbane has some pretty strict rules around sightlines and that often means that um we prune trees really aggressively and we don't allow taller um shrubs and and bushes in in garden beds. And that takes away a lot of the space for smaller native birds and insects where they would forage and and find refuge. And so because council doesn't plant those kinds of bushes and 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 smaller shrubs and um because we're continually trimming away the lower branches on our trees, there's no space for those smaller birds. So all we get in our suburbs are magpies and noisy miners and two or three other of the really common bird species. But that diverse range of smaller native birds that are still common in other regions, other parts of southeast Queensland have been pushed out of Brisbane. Um, so I encourage councillors to just maybe read more widely about this if this is something you're interested in. But some of the specific design guidelines around how our parks and garden beds are being maintained is leading to a lot of that mid-level canopy and that's the bushes and and lower shrubs being removed from council um parks in the interest of maintaining sightlines, which uh as a result actually means there's no habitat for those smaller bird species and smaller reptiles. Um, I might hope councillor Johnston doesn't misinterpret me on this one. But I actually think there's also a case sometimes for not mowing certain parks, cer- certain parts of certain parks. Um, I think that needs to be evidence-based. But um there are, for example, parts of Dutton Park in in my area where um there are sloped banks which could be left with longer grass and that would be a place for um native birds and and insects to have habitat. Um, those areas don't need to be mowed as often and maybe that frees up more resources and more funding to to mow the fields and open grassy areas that really need to be mown more regularly. Um, and if councillor Marks is interested, I'm happy to provide a list of locations that I don't think need to be mown and we can reallocate that budget to some other part of the city. Because um I I for one have really fond memories of Christmas beetles as a kid. I remember um growing up in Shemside, you'd you'd see them all over the place and there were some some years where the places were completely inundated by Christmas beetles. But we don't seem to have that as much in Brisbane anymore. And one of the main factors is that there, we don't have those um areas with like a lot of long grass and sort of scrubby spaces where Christmas beetles and other similar species naturally breed. So by um clearing out all that undergrowth, we've taken away that habitat. Um, and in so doing, we've taken away that native species from our local ecosystems. So simple steps like planting a few more bushes and low shrubs in our garden beds around council streets and parks and and maybe strategically leaving a few pa- park areas with longer grass um so that insects have somewhere to breed can actually be a really good thing. Um, and it it might be wise for council to look at what some of the neighbouring councils are doing because I think they're taking a more nuanced approach to this stuff. Um, rather than clearing and mowing absolutely everything, they're mowing the bits that need to be mowed um and preser- preserving some areas as more natural bushland reserves and and wildlife spaces. And I think that's, that's a really good thing that we could look to emulate. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Sri, is there any other general business? There be no other general business, we'll now move to the motions uh from earlier in the meeting. Uh councillor Cassidy, would you like to repeat your motion? And then you have nine and a half minutes left to speak to her. Thank you councillor Cassidy.
Sorry, did you say move it again, Chair? I missed the start of that.
Uh, could you move your motion again just so we can understand again what it is? And your time will start after you've read your motion.
Of course, we, the LMP run Brisbane City Council rules out cutting any more public transport services.
Thank you councillor Cassidy, you have nine and a half minutes.
Thanks Chair, where I where I left off earlier um today uh was talking about the recent ferry network review. So what we saw in the lead up to that ferry network review uh was services being terminated. Now, the the Lord Mayor and the Chair of the Transport Committee um have said repeatedly that um there have been no cuts to public transport, no cuts to public transport funding. And yet what we're seeing in terms of river-based public transport are less services, those services at Norman Park because uh according to the LMP, are not being used enough, blame the passengers, um cut the services. And then we saw uh the LMP uh roll out this uh ferry network review, which started in secret. Uh, and it's only thanks to um local councils, I think, in pushing that out, that we probably had a pretty reasonable response uh in terms of that um responses to the ferry network review. And I'm sure people haven't in that advocated for cuts to services. Uh, and so we certainly hope that those services to Norman Park will be restored. Uh, but we of course wouldn't be in that position if uh this Lord Mayor had properly maintained that fleet of publicly owned boats, publicly owned um mono-hull ferries. But what we've seen uh from the LMP, the rule when it comes to reviewing public transport services in this place uh is that after a review, cuts follow. Uh, that happened back in 2013 on a previous bus network review. Uh, we've seen public transport services on the Riverbeak cut, uh and then a review start on them. And we know now we have a bus network review uh coming down the line quite rapidly. Uh, and if uh the LMP's uh the LMP's reason for cutting public transport services on the river are anything to go by, there are an awful lot of bus services that will be on the chopping block. Bus, important local bus services that may have low patronage but offer a very important local service to people. Uh, if you take the measure of the LMP that they are low patronage, then they will be on the chopping block. Uh, now, we've heard earlier today from the Lord Mayor that there are claims that uh public transport funding under the LMP has been going up. But what we've consistently seen uh since 2012 and and not even taking COVID into account uh has been public transport patronage uh going down. Uh, and that's all on the LMP's watch and that's the reason then they are using to cut these public transport services. So what what we want to see is a commitment here today uh that this LMP administration rules out cutting more public transport services. They have cut public transport services, that's on the public record. We want to rule out any more cuts to those public transport services because the people are going to participate in a bus network review uh as a result of the Brisbane Metro coming online. Uh, we want to do that in good faith and we want to want people to have confidence that when they are participating in that and and talking about the kind of services that they want to see and they um want to use, that they can do that uh in good faith. And so what we don't want to see is cuts like we've seen at Norman Park in the dead of night, uh cuts like we've seen at the 480 Mount Coofa shuttle bus just this week without any public consultation. The kind of cuts that we saw, uh those routes that were cut in 2013 uh without a proper community consultation. We know what passes for community. We know what passes for community consultation these days under the L M P. We've seen that over the last few weeks, whether it's a a bowls club or a sporting precinct around the city, we want to make sure that it is, it is done right. And there is a, there is a very clear starting point, a very clear set of parameters that this review will not lead to cuts in public transport services. We can't be thinking we're going into 2032 as an Olympic city and cutting suburban public transport services. So that's what we're seeking here today, to get a very clear commitment out of council that, that from now going forward, whatever the results of the ferry network review and the bus network review coming down the line will not lead to further public transport cuts.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Any other speakers? Councillor Murphy.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. What we're seeing here today is another classic example of Labour scaremongering. Hot on the heels from their disgraceful attempt at scaremongering on backbone last week, here we are yet again with the councillors opposite trying to scare people. Chair, every day is Halloween when you're a member of this Labour caucus. Let me be absolutely clear. The Shrinna Council is delivering a
That was a really good line, Halloween line.
I'm glad you liked it. The Shrinna Council is delivering record investments in public transport in Brisbane.
Young whipple there, councillor.
Now councillor Cassidy knows this because, similar to this motion, he attempted some scaremongering during the budget debate earlier this year, when he suggested that this council was reducing funding for public transport planning in the new budget. He was, of course, wrong in that debate and as well, because he's aware that we're working on a new business case for an additional city glider, the gold city glider, which we're hoping that the state government will agree to co-fund with council. Now, here are the facts, Chair. We are delivering the highest ever investment that council has made in buses and ferries. We're also delivering a brand new transport option with the Turn Up and Go Brisbane Metro, a project that typically wouldn't fall to a local council to deliver, but we are delivering it nonetheless. The ferry network review is another way that we're going to make public transport in Brisbane even better. More than five and a half million people travel by ferry every year. But we know this figure could be higher, and there could be even more residents and visitors using our City Cats, Kitty Cats and ferries. We really want to see patronage numbers grow, Chair. We see a huge amount of potential in our ferry network. In the new budget, the Shrinna Council announced $53 million over the next three years to upgrade three terminals, South Bank, Mowbray Park and Dockside, and to continue construction of the new Howard Smith Wharves Terminal. There've been a number of changes to the ferry network over the last 12 months. And by the end of 2021, the new Howard Smith Wharves Terminal and the upgraded South Bank Terminal will be open for use. This means it's the perfect time to do a comprehensive review of the ferry network. So that's exactly what we're doing. And as usual, Labour councils are now trying to scaremonger, saying we're going to cut services. But Chair, there's no conspiracy here. Our goal is simply to make the network even better and more usable for the people of Brisbane. We're on the side of the people who live in this city. We want to improve our ferry services for residents and visitors alike, so that they choose to hop on a City Cat rather than jump in the car. The other ridiculous suggestion by councillor Cassidy is that this is all happening in secret. This review involves two rounds of consultation with the public. We are bringing the community along with us every step of the way. The entire objective of this exercise is to understand how the community thinks that we can make the ferry network better, to understand their needs and what will encourage them to use ferries, City Cats and Kitty Cats even more. It's not happening behind closed doors, it's happening on the ground, out in the community, with multiple community information sessions held today. There'll be even more in-person community consultation sessions for the second round, which starts on the 30th of August, and even more opportunity for anyone and everyone to tell council how we can make ferry transport better. Now, this is a secretive process. Why would we have promoted it on council's website? Why would we have advertised it on social media? Sent emails to all councils, sent letters to over 75,000 residents and posted flyers at terminals and onboard City Cats? If we wanted to have a secretive process? Chair, we've gone above and beyond to make as many people aware of the review as possible. We're very pleased to have received such a significant response from the Brisbane community over 2,000 submissions in the first round of consultation. And that's at a time when there's less people using our public transport network because of COVID than ever before. But as we've always said, any change to public transport should always aim to benefit as many people as possible. And this doesn't appear to be a concept that the opposition can understand. Thank goodness, the Shrinna Council's leadership is guiding the future of transport in Brisbane, because councillor Cassidy's team proved time and time again that they would not deliver value-for-money public transport services. They continue to say that the Norman Park ferry should be brought back. The lowest patronised service in the history of council, less than one person per service. Is this the gold standard that you have to reach in order for the Labour Party to support the retention of a service? One person per trip? Well, I have news for you, Chair. One person per trip isn't public transport. That's a ride share. We now have the same story with the Labour Party on the Mount Coother Shuttle, which had very low patronage, an average of 2.4 people per trip, including the driver. So very low patronage in a service which was primarily to support the international tourism sector, which we know is now virtually non-existent until the borders open back up. And could the Labour Party find it in them, in themselves to support this service change? Not a chance. Chair, both Norman Park and Mount Coother are reasonable and common sense changes to ensure that we're delivering value-for-money services and allocating resources where they needed most. But the Labour Party couldn't support either change. So Chair, what service changes would they support? Well, the answer is none, because in the Labour Party, the answer is just to borrow more money. Let's reflect on the state costs per passenger subsidy of transport modes in South East Queensland. This year, it was $40.97 for every passenger carried on the rail network. Do you know what it was for buses? Just $7.30. So it's true that the bus network is more efficient, but rail is the only mode receiving capital investment from the state government. If not for this council, there would be zero investment happening in the bus network. It would be standing still. Mr. Chair, I'm not surprised to see more Labour scaremongering, and it's very predictable. I fully expect and I flate that they'll do this exact kind of scaremongering when we undertake our bus network review for Metro. But this is what separates the Shrinna Council and councillor Cassidy's team. We remain laser focused on making travel in Brisbane better for everyone. We acknowledge that this is not an easy task. Sometimes difficult decisions will need to be made, but this administration has the guts to make them. Those opposite couldn't make a decision if they tried. They can barely make a decision on their chamber strategy before they come into these meetings, let alone decisions that affect people's lives in the community. Initiatives like the ferry network review and the upcoming bus network review are incredibly complex. But based on what we continue to hear from councillor Cassidy, it's not something his team would ever consider or even attempt. Just mark a point in time. Whatever the network last was in the 90s, that's the way it will be now and forevermore. No improvements, no new services, no investment, no reallocation of resources, just stagnation. And it's no wonder that their team has been in a permanent state of decline for the last decade. It took 100 years for the fall of the Roman Empire to take place, but those opposite have done it to the Labour brand in Brisbane City Hall in just 20 years. It's a remarkable achievement. But Chair, Brisbane residents aren't stupid, and councillor Cassidy, through you, Chair, they see that your team take 100% of the shots 100% of the time. They see that your team are genuine when it comes to supporting sensible changes to Brisbane's public transport network.
Point of order, put in order to you, councillor Three.
Some of these mini diatribes about the Labour Party are a bit out of topic. I'm asking you to draw the councillor back in terms of relevance.
I believe the councillor Murphy is being relevant to the motion before us. Councillor Murphy.
I'll come back, Chair. Look. In respect of the ferry review, Transport for Brisbane is currently analysing the data collected from round one of the consultation before going out to a second round of consultation between the 30th of August and the 17th of September. The second round of consultation will be in a similar format, an online survey and in-person sessions. We look forward to receiving even more feedback from the community and working together to make the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today. I can tell you that administration councillors won't be supporting this motion today, but I can flate that we'll be moving an amendment so that this motion is something that administration councillors can and will support. So, Mr. Chair, I want to make the following amendment, and I've sent it through to the clerks. A, remove the words "L M P run Brisbane City" and add in "Shrinna". B, remove the words "cutting anymore" and adding in "cuts to councils". C, removes the word "services" and adds in the word "subsidy", and D, adds in the words "and continues to increase our funding of public transport services". So, Mr. Chair, the amended motion will now read that the Shrinna Council rules out cuts to council's public transport subsidy and continues to increase our funding of public transport services.
Have you circulated that amendment, councillor Murphy?
Point of order.
Seconded.
Point of order.
Point of order, to you councillor Johnston.
Um, yes, the original motion talks about cuts to services. The amended motion substantially changes the nature of the motion to refer to subsidies which are provided by a different level of government. It fundamentally changes the nature of the motion, and I ask you to rule it out of order.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. The subsidies actually
Sorry councillor, I haven't put it yet. Councillor.
The subsidies actually provided by Brisbane City Council actually provide the services for the residents of Brisbane. So I believe the intent is maintained.
This is not a debate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I've made a request under the meeting's local law to the chairperson, and I would appreciate it being addressed rather than it being debated by other councillors.
Thank you. Yes, I agree. I'll deal with points of order one by one. Councillor Johnston, to your point of order. The motion is about public transport services. As an integral part of public transport services is the subsidies that are aware of, that are paid to provide those services. The state government determines services and timetables. On the basis of that, I believe that the amendment is valid, and I believe that it has not affected the intent of the original motion.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order. I move dissent in my ruling.
Okay. There was a point of order first from councillor Three.
Sorry.
Uh, thanks, Chair. I just wanted to highlight that I, I do genuinely think that this motion does substantially change the original motion, and I would urge you to seek legal advice. Urge you to seek legal advice before making a ruling.
I've, I've made a ruling, councillor Three. I believe that the motion
I've moved dissent.
Is valid, and I understand that councillor Johnston has moved dissent in my motion. I'll deal with, deal with that dissent first. Dissent in my ruling has been moved by councillor Johnston. All those who agree with that dissent, water please raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
And that was seconded by councillor Cassidy. Had his hand up, Mr. Chairman.
And seconded by councillor Cassidy, thank you. All those opposed, please say so and raise your hands. The motion does, is not carried. The motion stands.
Division. Division.
A division is called, has been called first. Please, clerks ring the bells. Dissent has been moved in my ruling. All those who agree with that dissent, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
All those who say no, please say so and raise your hands.
No.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Mr. Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 18 against.
Thank you. What we'll now, councillor Murphy, would you like to speak to the amendment, please?
Just very briefly, Chair, I believe I made most of the points in my original contribution to this debate. But just to recap, this year, our council will subsidise public transport to the tune of $153 million per annum. It's grown every year under the L M P's time in office. And as per our budget forward estimates published in the budget this year, it will continue to grow into the future, and it will grow substantially above the rate of inflation as a result of the investment we're making with Brisbane Metro. Now, we can't control what the state government will do, but we can control our own subsidy, and that will continue to go up. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Speak to the amendment, councillor Cassidy.
Uh, thanks very much, Chair. This clearly, this amendment clearly does change the intent of the motion. There's obviously a reason for that. There's obviously a reason that the L M P will not vote and will not make a commitment one way or the other on a very simple proposition. And that was that this council would rule out cutting any more public transport services. Now, they've tried to mess around with this and talk about public transport subsidies. But that is a completely different issue to the services that are running around the suburbs of Brisbane and providing a vital public service. So if they can't engage in a very simple proposition, will they cut services or will they not in both the ferry network review, which is just wrapped up, and the upcoming bus network review? If they can't answer that, and they can't make that commitment to the people of Brisbane, they will, once again, like we saw last week, engage in political bastardry, and that's what we're seeing here today, obfuscation. And they are trying to create a distraction over here, so the people of Brisbane don't notice those cuts to public transport services. Councillor Murphy talked about this council's investment in the bus network, and he talked about the metro. But we certainly know that the L M P and Lord Mayor Adrian Sherr are investing in jobs when it comes to the metro, jobs in China, and in Chinese-made buses, and jobs in Switzerland, in Swiss-made buses, and we're getting very little bang for buck when it comes to the capacity on the busway of the metro. So we'll be seeing, we'll be seeing rates go up an enormous amount to cover the $1.2 billion metro project, which is already blown out by $300 million, to add about 2,000, 3,000 seats per hour on that network. And as a result of that, the changes that are going to have to be made, because this Lord Mayor insisted on buying Swiss-made buses instead of locally made buses, we're going to see an enormous network review, which now, we find out now, will inevitably lead to service cuts. Because the L M P couldn't find it in themselves to say unequivocally on the record that they would not cut public transport services further. So I say to the people of Brisbane, there you have it.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Any other speakers? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to join the debate as well. We've heard that councillor Cassidy seems to think that this is all about cuts and that, you know, the champion of the people is the Labour Party. I know in my ward, and I can speak to my ward, where we've seen a massive growth in population, and the Department of Education changed school boundaries, which left over 120 kids unable to catch a bus network. Now, we also know that it's TransLink that decides our routes and the, and the routes that these buses travel. And specifically for the services that occupy my area, it wasn't until we had the, the Lord Mayor as Chair for Transport and Infrastructure step in and actually champion the increased service delivery to Upper Kedron and Fernie Grove. Now, this was done by an L M P government. It wasn't done by a Labour state member. It wasn't done by a Labour party member. It was done by an L M P member.
Yeah.
I distinctly remember those services coming online, and on the very first day of those services, there were over 50 kids riding those buses. Now, this is what the network review is about. This is about going out and asking the people, how do you want to move? How do you want to move on our ferry service? How do you want to move on our bus service? This is important. Councillor Cassidy seems to think that there's a simple solution for this. It's not the case. People are moving in a different way than they used to. People are moving in a different way than they used to. Decisions are being made at other levels of government that decide that people change how they move. And this is a very important part of why this network uh transport review for the ferries and also the buses is needed. Now councillor Murphy mentioned that, you know, we have two-thirds of our public transport uh use the bus network. Uh, in my area, it's a hundred percent. Uh, people in in the gap ward uh don't trust the train network. They're pleading for council to provide services out to Upper Kedron because they don't rely on the train network. Now, that is part of the network review, we can determine what the effect of uh the network review is on our suburbs by doing this study and finding out how people want to move around. It's not just a case of people wanting to go from suburb to suburb anymore. There's a growth in population uh out in the northwest corridor, which has a transport shadow, we all know that. Uh, and these kids and the people there are trying to get to the city, they're trying to get to universities. They're trying to get to other areas of the city. And this network review will provide the data that we need to make the right decision. The informed decision, not the simple cut and paste solution that councillor Cassidy uh is suggesting. So therefore, I move a motion to uh have the amendment put. Can I have a second please?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Landis.
That's wrong, that is wrong.
A motion has been moved.
Everybody should be allowed to debate this, that's disgusting.
Answer ship.
Thank you, thank you, a motion has been moved to put the motion uh and has been by councillor Toomey and seconded by councillor Landis. I I move that the motion be put, um please, uh can we vote on that?
No.
Motion before us.
No.
Be put, all in favour, please raise your hands.
No, I agree, no.
No.
All who say no.
No. No.
No.
Councillor Strunk, please.
No.
No.
You you have the opportunity, your no has been recorded.
We have not.
We have not had an opportunity to make anything.
So.
Division.
Of course, the lord mayor's smiling like a little smiley.
We will be able to debate.
Division.
The amended motion, please.
Division.
Please order.
Smiley thinks she wants a debate.
I'll take the vote again, all those in favour of the motion being put, please raise your hands and say aye. All those opposed to the motion being put, please say no and raise your hands.
No. No.
No.
The motion, the motion has been carried.
Division.
They're saying.
Division has been called by councillor three. Is there a seconder?
Uh councillor Johnson.
And councillor Johnson, thank you. Division, please ring the bells.
That's about the most pathetic act you've ever done, we can't even have a debate in general business on public transport. Shame, shame on you.
It it does seem kind of undemocratic, you know.
Collectively, they're all shamed.
Turn their mic off, Mr Chair.
Yeah, you've just done that.
Well, now I can't hear anything, but I do think this has been very undemocratic and I'm quite concerned about this process.
We have a result on that division.
Oh, good.
Oh, sorry, um can we uh result of the vote, please? Can all all those in favour, please say aye, raise your hands. And no, please say so and raise your hands.
No.
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 No way.
The ayes.
This is wrong, you people are disgusting to do this without debate.
Results, please, clarks.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour and seven against.
Thank you, councillor Murphy, I believe you have a right to respond now.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Oh, he put he put it, he can't respond to a motion he's put.
Didn't let's put it as the amendment.
Councillor, uh lord mayor, you have you have your hand up?
Uh, during that um uh display of disorder by various opposition councillors, uh one of them, and I believe it was councillor Strunk, uh compared the Brisbane City Council, the democratically elected Brisbane City Council with Nazi Germany. I demand that he withdraw that offensive comment.
Shame. You just stopped democratic debate, you stopped it, it was pathetic. You're useful nonsense.
Order, please.
And to prevent others from participating.
Please stop talking over each other, I'll turn everybody's mics off. Councillor Strunk, if you said those offensive remarks, will you please withdraw?
Um, I think the record will show video as well as transcript that I never said that at all.
Liar.
Wrong.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order, now it's.
Point of order.
Wasn't councillor Strunk, wasn't me either.
Point of order.
Who voted, councillor Johnston?
Um, councillor Adams, the deputy mayor, just called councillor Strunk a liar. I have been expelled from council for calling another councillor a liar without any debate or anything. Um, you must apply the same rule to councillor Adams and if you call another councillor a liar, then they are gone. That's been the rule.
For the rest of the meeting, kick her out. Councillor Adams, you had your hand up?
Look, I am happy to withdraw that if the person who did say it.
Point of order, I have made a point of order to you, Mr Chairman, and under the rules you are required to address it, not engage in debate with everybody else. So, the rule has been, if you call somebody a liar, then you get expelled. I'm asking you to apply the same standard to councillor Adams, it's a point of order and I would appreciate your ruling.
Um, thank you councillor Johnson, I, on your uh point of order, I ask that councillor Adams withdraw her comment.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I'm happy to withdraw the comment if the person who did say it tells me who it is.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, Lord Mayor.
Uh, some of my colleagues have mentioned that it was actually councillor Cassidy who made that offensive Nazi comment.
Correct, it was.
This is farcical, this is farcical.
No, it's an offensive. Uh, point of order, Mr Chairman, let's be clear, councillor Adams did not um unwithdrawedly uh un- unreservedly withdraw um that calling councillor Strunk a liar. Um, as her own side now knows, now knows, it was not him, she needs to be ejected, so the rule is applied fairly. I, if you call someone a liar, you get kicked out, that's what's happened to me. Um, and I ask you to apply the same rule and eject councillor Adams for her disorderly behaviour. Uh, and false allegation against councillor Strunk.
Thank you councillor Johnson for your point of order. Uh, councillor Adams, I again ask you to address that uh request from councillor Johnston.
If it is councillor Cassidy that made the call and he admits that he makes the call, I will withdraw my apology.
Oh, you shouldn't apologize, Miss In.
You can't call someone a liar.
This is, this is outrageous, Mr Chairman, I draw your attention to the meeting's local law. Um, it is uh disorderly conduct to make an adverse reflection about another councillor. Without question councillor Adams.
You'd know councillor Johnson.
Without question councillor Adams has made untrue adverse reflections upon councillor Strunk. Um, the uh meeting's local law requires you to take action against her for doing this. Um, she has twice now been offered the opportunity to withdraw and has not done so. And the standard has been, if you call someone a liar, you get kicked out. I wasn't given the option.
I am happy to withdraw, I've explained that. I withdraw the apology to councillor Strunk, I do not withdraw the comment about them not saying it, but they won't own up to who says it, they're hiding behind the videos today. Um, somebody said it and they won't own up to it. Um, but if it's not councillor Strunk, I'm happy to withdraw the comment about councillor Strunk.
Um, all councillors, please, uh we've gone a long way from the motion that was before us, which is about public transport. I would like you all pleased very much to return to that subject. Uh, we have the opportunity for people to speak to.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Uh, excuse me councillor Johnston, I'm speaking, you have an opportunity, you have an opportunity to speak to the substantive motion that is as is now before us and I invite speakers to the substantive motion.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Substantive motion.
Point of order. Yes, I move dissent in your ruling and your failure to discipline councillor Adams for her appalling conduct.
Um, seconded. Dissent in my ruling has been moved by councillor Johnston uh and seconded by councillor Griffiths. Uh, all those in favour of that motion, please raise their hands and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please raise your hands and say no. The noes have it.
Division.
Division called.
Seconded.
Seconded by councillor Cumming, um please ring the bells.
First time today councillor McLaughlin, it's all your own side. The lord mayor's children and the dog barking, councillor Mackay, now councillor Adams, this morning with me and again, the people that are doing the wrong thing here are your own people and you need to get it under control.
The only person needs to get under control is the person who can't keep their mouth shut during a division and that would be councillor Johnson.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that would be you calling people liars.
Johnstone.
Hey, councillor Adams is the one who's behaved appallingly today.
Sooner we get back face to face the better.
We're now putting this to the vote, to the vote, the dissent uh uh request, please, all those in in favour, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those who say no, please say so and raise your hands.
No.
No.
The noes have it. Oh, were there any abstentions, I'm sorry? Oh, one abstention, I'm sorry councillor three. Yep.
Mr Chair, the noes have it, the voting being six in favour, eighteen against and one abstention.
Thank you. Okay, let's please return to the substantive matter before us.
Point of order.
To do so, councillor.
Point of order.
Councillor Strunk.
Yes, uh, Mr Chair, could you read out the substantive motion again, please? I have sort of, I can't remember it actually after all this.
Thank you, well perhaps, uh yeah, I'll read it out, um I have it here now. Um, that the Shriner Council rules out cuts to council's public transport subsidy and continues to increase our funding of public transport services. That is now the substantive motion, councillor Johnston.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Councillor Johnston had her hand up first.
I, point of order, Mr Chair.
Um, sorry councillor Adams, I'll go to your point of order.
Uh, I'm sorry, I just, can I ask you a question? I I believe it was councillor Murphy's turn to sum up because we put the amendment, we haven't voted on that amendment just yet.
Okay, thank you, that's probably right, I missed that in the in that guffaw, yes, okay. Councillor, councillor Murphy, um you have a uh a right of reply to the amendment, let's go with that first.
Uh, Chair, I believe there's a number of people who want to get to uh speaking on the substantive part of this debate, so I'll waive my right of uh reply so we can get stuck into the substantive debate and I
Thank you.
Just note, note that no one's being cut off from debating on that.
Yes, this is where we wanted to get to, which is a vote on the substantive motion. Uh, are there speakers to the substantive motion before us?
Well, don't you have to put the amendment now, Mr Chairman? If he's refusing his right of reply, you've got to put the amendment so we can vote against it.
Okay, all right, uh I will put.
Thirteen years you've been here.
I will put the amended motion, uh which was, as I've just read out. Sorry, excuse me for a moment. Okay, as I thought, councillors, we have put the amended motion and now the debate is on the amended motion, the substantive motion, please, can we go to that debate? Are there any speakers to the substantive motion?
Motion. Okay.
Councillor Johnston.
Thank you, I rise to speak on the motion and can we please ask councillor Adams not to be involved in this anymore? Because that's just, you know, now councillor, anyway, um I'm appalled.
Gag the debate now.
I'm appalled.
No, have a debate, Lord Mayor, just one person.
I'm appalled at the LMP's action here to um stifle debate on the motion put forward by uh councillor Cassidy. Um, that councillor Toomey has been wheeled out to do it, who generally is a fair player in the scheme of council, to do the dirty work of this LMP and to prevent substantive debate on a genuine motion about the delivery of public transport services to this city absolutely defies belief. Now, let's be clear, the reason that we are now debating a substantive motion that does not refer to services is because there are service cuts coming. We know that this administration has a track record of cutting both bus and ferry services and has done so over the past decade. In my own ward, the bus cuts include uh the one oh one and the one oh two, they were cut completely uh from Corinda, that is true and it was done by the LMP. Uh, and uh the one oh four and the one nine eight.
We can't hear you, Mr Chair, your mic's off.
Councillor McLaughlin, councillor Cook has a point of order, she's had her hand up, can you please respond?
Councillor Johnston, councillor Cook, you had a point of order.
Um, yes, Mr Chair, I can't hear what councillor Johnston is saying because the lord mayor keeps turning his mic on and off and interjecting every five seconds. Could you just apply the same rules for everyone?
Please, everybody abide by meeting local rules and allow the speaker to be heard in silence, thank you.
Now, let's be clear, the one oh four and the one nine eight had their uh frequency cut. Now, that's just buses and then we know that the uh LMP has cut the city cat services at Norman Park and I'm sure councillor Cook will have something to say about that. Um, so this idea that there are no service cuts coming, uh that they try and have you believe is untrue. Um, they have form when it cuts to coming uh to cutting public transport. And the fact that they want to do this uh switch and bait routine with services and subsidies raises a another problem. That is, that Brisbane City Council's subsidies are only to some services in Brisbane, uh not to all services in Brisbane. Um, and yes, we might have heard from councillor Toomey how he's got his own special bus out there in the western suburbs and councillor three's got special council-funded buses in his area. But for those of us in the middle ring suburbs, we don't. Um, and when this administration cuts bus services, it has a real impact particularly on vulnerable elderly people. We know that there are more bus cuts coming because it's in Brisbane City Council's LMP strategy for the Brisbane Metro, a hundred and twenty-five different services, it's in their feasibility report. And that doesn't include truncations, so we don't know um how extensive the cuts and truncations are going to be. Then let's turn to city cats. Um, uh during the bit of the debate that the LMP allowed themselves to have, a number of statements were made um about how the LMP want to see the numbers uh in the ferry network grow, that was councillor Murphy, that was a good one. Um, but there's a comprehensive review underway and they want more residents using city cats. Well, clearly that's not the case. Um, this administration has voted against motions and petitions to extend city cat up the river uh to my ward and possibly beyond. And in their own network review, twenty-three percent of all the two thousand responses come from Tennyson Ward suburbs. A hundred and fifty-four people in the suburb of Yoronga alone support uh city cats coming upriver. Now, the push poll survey they put out on this didn't actually include space, uh easy space to actually. to actually say, we want better services or new services, you actually had to go in and be quite creative about how you gave that feedback. 414 residents in Tennyson Ward made the effort to do that. Now, today, the LNP are saying that they want to see more residents using the ferry network, they want to see numbers grow, yet they are fundamentally unprepared and unwilling to consider additional City Cat services up the Brisbane River. That is wrong. We know that this Lord Mayor has estimated the cost of reinforcing the banks of the river at around $16 million, that would be more in today's term. We know that there would be work to pay for 10 or 12 million dollar terminals. But let me be clear, that'll be a lot less than the cost of other major infrastructure like the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge with its restaurant. These are all choices and the LNP are choosing to service their own areas and ignore the parts of Brisbane that they don't want to engage with. Well, the residents of my ward have spoken clearly, 414 residents out of just under 2,000 have said they want the City Cat upriver. Now councillor Murphy said one thing today, but he refuses as the chair in this area to consider additional City Cats. Now, we know that the motion before us today is to obfuscate and to hide the service cuts that are coming to the ferry network, just like they did with the bus network. And the fact that councillor Toomey guillotined the debate to stop debate on the amendment is just an outrageous course of action by somebody who should be ashamed of himself, doing the dirty work of the LNP councillors instead of having an open debate about the need for better public transport services in our community. I don't support the cuts to the bus services, I've been speaking out about them now for four years because it's been clear from the beginning, they are part of the strategy on Metro. I don't support the cuts to City Cats, councillor Cook has made that argument week in and week out, and I support expansion of City Cat services up the river. The fact that this LNP administration refuses to have a proper, open debate, refuses to listen to residents' feedback about City Cat terminals and better City Cat services, and then asks for feedback on bus reviews but then cuts bus services, that is the track record that this LNP administration have. The LNP Shriner Council have cut services and there are more coming. Shame on you.
Speakers, councillor Strye.
Thanks Chair, just going to speak on this motion, I'm feeling a little bit frustrated in the sense that I don't think everyone in the chamber is necessarily open to genuine and respectful debate. And I do wonder a little bit whether this is even a good use of our time. The amended motion departs substantially from the original intent of the motion and unfortunately, I don't feel as comfortable in the, perhaps the reassurance that councillor seeking to provide because the language used in the amended motion still leaves open the possibility that council might cut particular services. And, I mean, I understand the rationale that the LNP are seeking to run here, that some services only have a, have low patronage and they want to leave, leave open the possibility that they might cut some of those low patronage services in, in future. I, I get that and I see why councillor Murphy is advancing that position, but I think it's a poor strategy from an advocacy perspective. I think council should be doing a better job, a more effective job of pressuring the state government to increase funding for public transport so that council doesn't have to choose between one service and another or choose to cut one service in order to improve another. Frankly, I'm consistently surprised at what a poor job the council administration does at advocating for improvements to public transport and that's no disrespect to any one councillor or to the council officers, I think it's a structural problem where council just isn't very good at advocating in general for, for public transport service improvements. We should be in a very strong bargaining position where politically it would seem that there'd be a really, there'd be a lot of pressure that could be brought to bear on the state government to improve funding for public transport. But the council administration's advocacy strategy in that space has been, I think, lackluster at best. And I think it starts with education, I think a lot of members of the public still don't understand how public transport is, is funded and how service delivery is structured and I think the LNP administration has done a fairly poor job of explaining that to the general public. But to come back to this motion, the, the motion now says the Shriner Council rules out cuts to council's public transport subsidy and continues to increase our funding of public transport services, but it, it's not specific, specific enough to give me much confidence. It would be simple to make only minor increases to public transport funding, which wouldn't necessarily guarantee improvements to public transport service coverage overall, and I worry that that's what will happen, is that the council's quote unquote increase in funding is simply going to be increases in line with inflation or CPI or what have you, and there won't actually be a genuine significant increase to public transport funding from Brisbane City Council. And I think that's disappointing because this council continues to spend a huge amount of money on subsidising private transport. Council subsidises private motor vehicle transport to the tune of tens of millions of dollars a year, hundreds of millions of dollars a year if you include road resurfacing and major intersection winding projects. The amount of money that council spends on road related projects.
Point of order Chair. Point of order councillor Murphy.
Or councillor Sri take a question?
Sure.
Councillor Sri, will you take a question for councillor Murphy?
Councillor Sri, do you accept that buses also use the roads that we resurface?
Thanks councillor Murphy, I do, and, and I, I'm not arguing against road resurfacing, but the simple fact is that if council shifted more people onto public transport, that would reduce the amount of wear and tear on our roads because we'd be reducing the number of private vehicles using those roads. And, and I think we have a lot to learn from other cities, even other regions around Australia that make that difficult choice to sometimes spend a little bit less on road resurfacing so that they can spend a little bit more on public transport. And what that means in the long term is that there is a shift towards public transport because the services being provided are better. This has been a topic of hot debate in a lot of US cities and a lot of Canadian cities where city administrations have recognised that with an ever expanding road network, the, the costs of maintaining that infrastructure, of continually resurfacing those roads only going to continue rising if council continues, councils continue to build more roads and if local governments continue to expand their road network. It would be much better to divert some of that money towards public transport so we can actually get cars off the road. In particular, a lot of the money that we spend on road resurfacing is chewed up repairing roads that have been damaged by heavy vehicles that probably shouldn't even be using those roads in the first place. This is a slight diversion from the topic, so I don't want to spend too much time on it, but we, but we do see a lot of heavy vehicles using really small roads that aren't designed for that heavy traffic. And as a result, those roads get cracked and potholed and then we have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars resurfacing them. If council was a little stricter about enforcing its own rules in terms of keeping heavy vehicle traffic to main roads, we wouldn't have to spend all that money on road resurfacing those minor suburban streets and we could instead put that into public transport. And that's ultimately what I think all of us want to see is more, more investment and more funding in public transport. But I, I'm really concerned about the, the implication of this new motion, which appears to suggest that the council is still open to cutting public transport services without a sufficient public conversation. I'd, I'd feel a lot more confident if the motion was a little more explicit about that, that the council won't cut public transport services, services without robust public consultation. But overall, I think this motion is so vague at the moment that I kind of even wonder why, why they're having it there, because all it says is that we're going to keep, keep subsidising public transport to the extent that we are currently, it's, it's so vague as to be meaningless. What I would like to see is that clear emotion that rules out cuts to public transport services because I think that's what the people of Brisbane are really concerned about and that's certainly what I'm concerned about.
Thank you councillor Strye, other speakers, councillor Baddick, you had your hand.
Thank you Mister Chairman, I should rise to speak in favour of this motion and, and what it actually sets out, which is clearly an indication of this, not only this administration, but this administration over the, over the terms, strong record to public transport investment. There's been a lot that's been said by councillors opposite, which I, I think it's important to clarify the history. And when we talk about these things, it's important to get the facts right before we proceed further. In regards to comments made, well not only by councillor Johnston but by opposition councillors into the, in regards to the previous bus review, those councils are choosing to ignore or do not recall the fact that that was a bus review that was instigated by the then state government, which was not of our choosing. And in fact, the Lord Mayor at the time and all of us as councillors actually publicly spoke against it and we actually raised motions in the chamber in regards to that.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Okay. Thank you, noted.
Thank you Mister Chairman, we actually spoke against it at the time and were actually forced to undertake that bus review. In the situation that we were in, what we did then was reviewed the entire bus network and tried to be as gentle as we could in regards to the needs and requirements of the state government through Translink, where they wanted savings in regards to the network. And so what we looked at were services that had literally under five passengers per service per day. And in fact, in some instances, the services that councillor Johnston speaks about but does not choose to speak about the numbers, there were on occasions two passengers on that bus at any given time, one of them was the driver and in some instances, it was just the driver. And so what we had to do was make those tough decisions in regards to that for the public benefit, because what we wanted to do then was be able to better utilise the, the services to be able to put further investment in other areas. And what we did with some of those savings, we actually put brand new bus services and councillor Griffiths wore in areas that he actually needed it because people were not able to get to the, to the train as a connector or to the city. And we had actually quite significant success with services in his own ward and significant patronage increases. And that's what this motion is about Mister Chairman, and that's what the Lord Mayor and councillor Murphy are attempting to do. This review Mister Chairman is not about cutting services, it's about improving services to meet the changing needs of the community. And that's what council needs to do, is councillor, councillor Cassidy and ALP councillors seriously trying to tell us that their colleagues, their ALP colleagues in state have never undertaken a review of Queensland Rail's services, that they've never undertaken a single review of any train service, that they haven't varied timetables, that they haven't cut services, we know that's not true.
And they have, they have.
They absolutely have, thank you councillor Murphy, yet he doesn't speak about that. He speaks about this service, one standard for the state, a different standard for us. So you can quite clearly see Mister Chairman, that this is nothing more than a political stunt. Now, I go to councillor Sri's statement and I mean no disrespect to councillor Sri whatsoever when I say this to him, and I genuinely mean that when I say that he obviously does not have the benefit of being in this chamber long enough, and that's just a fact. And so when he speaks about council's inability to negotiate better outcomes, he does not obviously have the history or the understanding of how much work was actually done during the Newman administration, the lease agreement that actually saw 500 new buses in his first term, which was unprecedented within Brisbane City Council. Councillor Sri is not obviously privy to the arrangements that were made in the glider service, which you councillor McLaughlin, Mister Chairman, initiated through an investigation and then delivered, where we saw record patronage of the Blue Glider service and then the Morone Glider service and then the Spring Hill service. And now your strong track record, Lord Mayor, is proceeding with a new service that you're also looking at in the Gold City Glider. Now councillor Sri obviously isn't aware of that, and I mean that respectfully, but council has worked tirelessly in respect to that, not only in regards to the bus services, Mister Chairman, but also in the funding agreements that we've done with ferry terminals. We were able to successfully increase the amount of funding that we received from Translink to support, let's not forget, the Hopper, which has been a tremendous success for all of Brisbane residents, which the state government chose not to, but through our efforts, we were able to negotiate those outcomes. Mister Chairman, there's a lot that this administration has done, you know, councillor Cassidy's policy adviser is Victoria Newton, and I'm sure that Victoria is listening to this, and she will recall her time as public and active transport chairman when she was ordering buses that did not have rear doors, that the fleet was so old that it was actually setting on fire, that there was no air conditioning of buses in a subtropical climate, that disability access was not something that they even considered. It was our administration, our previous Lord Mayors and this one that has delivered on 100% air conditioning, fully compliant buses, more services than we've ever seen before, higher grade of quality buses for people to sit and enjoy, increases in patronage pre-COVID. All of that has happened because of this Lord Mayor, this administration and its history. And I cannot believe that we are seriously having a conversation about reviewing services when all we're trying to do is provide more, not less, when all this Lord Mayor and councillor Murphy are trying to do is provide better services that meet changing communities' needs because this is what we need to do, not only because of the effect of COVID, but because of the governance that we undertake, because we owe that responsibility and duty to the people of Brisbane to continue to keep it upgraded. We want to be, we don't want to be like the prehistoric ALP councillors who never did anything for buses back in their time, that treated it more as a liability than as an asset, that did not care about how those services were delivered to local residents and simply delivered what they wanted to deliver as per their own budget. It's this Lord Mayor that has provided off peak incentives for, for the aged, he's the first one to do it, and what has it done? There have been people out there who are older, who are now catching buses, who are thanking this Lord Mayor for being able to make that commitment. It's this Lord Mayor that has funded it out of council's budget, not the state government, we've approached them in the past and they failed to come on the journey with us. So we will continue to do the things we need to do because this Lord Mayor and councillor Murphy are doing the things they need to, and they are continuing the negotiation. And when it comes to Metro and that whole role of that service, we have made it quite clear, going back to Graham Quirk's time, that because of the capacity and the benefit of that service, that there would have to be a review of connecting services. But it wasn't about cutting them, it was about providing efficiency to that high speed, high performance service to get better outcomes for residents. And what we wanted to do, even back then in Graham's time, was to redistribute those services to the suburbs, so there were more local improvements there and better connections to the Metro. This is what we're about, not what I'm hearing today and the politics from those opposite, Mister Chairman, who are of singular focus, just spooking their own line, not getting on board, not speaking what is reality and certainly not supporting what residents are wanting to do out there. Metro has been a visionary project, councillor Murphy and the Lord Mayor have pushed it forwards to even greater levels than we were able to before because of their commitment to public transport, because of their commitment to Brisbane's community. And we have done it with, with kicking and screaming from the state government at every single step. They have been dragged on the journey of public transport improvements to this city because they do not want to see us succeed, they do not want to see us succeed, they're barely delivering Cross River ride.
Mister Chair. Point of order to you, Lord Mayor.
Will councillor Matic take a question?
Councillor Matic, will you take a question from the Lord Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely, Lord Mayor.
Is councillor Matic aware, are you aware councillor Matic, of the most recent major cuts to the public transport network in South East Queensland, being the rail fail, which was introduced by minister Sterling Hinchcliffe at the time, whereby they didn't have enough drivers to drive the trains and they had to cut back massively on public transport services, which have now not still recovered.
Absolutely, Lord Mayor, and that's a great point. They could not even deliver on, on trains, they made the promises but could not follow through, and that's, so that's the complete opposite of what this Lord Mayor and councillor Murphy are doing. They are making sure that when they go out there and make these representations, they are delivering on them. What an absolute shame that councillor Cassidy is not moving a motion where council calls on the state government to improve its rail service, where they're spending more money on rail than we are, but we're getting bigger outcomes, even under COVID. Mister Chairman, this motion is, the motion that was set forward by the ALP is a joke. And what the motion put forward by councillor Murphy is actually a reflection of reality. This Lord Mayor is continuing to strongly support the subsidies that he has already delivered for the people of Brisbane, and he is strongly continuing to put more money into public transport, more money into buses, more money into ferries, more money into terminals, more money into making sure that those services are better reflective of what our Brisbane community wants. And it's about time that the ALP got on board, rather than waste our time with pointless political motions that they know are actually not fact. Mister Chairman, it's, I, I call on ALP councillors to actually step up and support the Lord Mayor and this motion moving forwards because public transport is fundamental to our society and to our community. And going back to councillor Sri's point, we invest record amounts of money into public transport to make sure that we deliver all those outcomes. When you look at public and active transport, not only buses and ferries and ferry terminals, but all the bikeways that we present, the green bridges that the Lord Mayor is. but all the bike ways that we present, the green bridges that the Lord Mayor is investing in, he is putting his priorities far forward in regards to public and active transport, which is the way that our city should be moving forwards. And that, Mr. Chairman, is is what this administration is about. So when you're hearing these one-sided positions from those opposite.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Point of order to you councillor Johnston.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I just ask you to check the time. I think it's been ten minutes.
Yeah, we'll be going within our timeframe. Thank you very much councillor Johnston for your advice. Councillor Matic, you have another minute. Oh, sorry, twelve seconds, we are about wrapped, yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I know councillor Johnson wants me to stop because she can't handle the truth. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councillor Johnston, you had a point of misrepresentation.
Yes, thank you. No, I just I just know that my microphone gets turned off at the end of ten minutes and I know your ten minutes was up. Um, yes, councillor Matic um stated, uh, well, I tried to imply stated uh that somehow I was saying that this was um uh a state government cut to the bus um to the bus review that was undertaken a few years ago. Clearly, I I stated that it was a Brisbane City Council review. It was Brisbane City Council that cut the buses.
Councillor Johnston, any other speakers? Is that you raising your hand councillor Strong?
Yes.
You have a floor.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, and whoever uh organized this uh strategy uh in regards to moving the debate towards the after the after the business of council, it's been a real snafu, I'll tell you. Whoever whoever that was should go back to the drawing board. Anyways, um I I I wanted to, I wanted to debate the uh the substantive motion, um simply because um the people out in my neck of the woods, right, um were not served by this council, were not served by the L M P council or the L M P state government in two thousand and thirteen, uh which was headed by Campbell Newman, who used to be, who was the former mayor of Brisbane. Uh, because um the amount of cuts that went through, and these weren't cuts with only a few people on the buses, right? These were substantial cuts. And if we have a look, and the connectiveness, the connectivity to the train station was probably the worst. Um, we only have to look at the the service four six two, four six five and four six six that were connective, uh were were connective services to the train station um from various areas around my ward or back down, of course, it was Richlands Ward. And um and they have never, it's never returned, never been returned. So um, I mean, we have a railway station that has six hundred and fifty car parks, that's how busy it is because it's full by seven o'clock. And then we cut the services. Now, why did the services get cut to the railway station? I don't know. I don't know what was in the in the Transport Minister at the time's head um and Scott Emerson's head at the time, but I tell you what, it was a disaster for my ward and the people and the residents in my ward. There was a a number of other services that were um decreased, um routes changed. And councillor Johnson has uh um highlighted a few of those, but it's probably worth repeating. Uh, the route seventy-seven, P eighty-eight, one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, one one eight, three six nine and four sixty were all downgraded. Well, I, that's my words, they were downgraded as far as I was concerned because they chewed, they they actually moved the routes around, so which distant transpired to a lot of people that were in a walking distance to the bus stop. Uh, the bus stop was no longer there. The bus was no longer there. So this is what happens. Uh, this is what the L M P council did back in two thousand and thirteen, along with the state government, which was run by the L M P. And councillor Matic got up and said, oh, but we debated, we didn't want to see the cuts and everything. Well, I'm sorry, I just don't quite, I think, I just don't quite believe that. I'm not going to call you that L word, uh but I just don't quite believe that you had your hearts. I don't quite believe your hearts were in it.
They did it. They did it, Charles. They did it.
I know. Well, thank you for the interjection, councillor. But yes, they did do it. And and you can't run away from it. You've got to stand up and say, yeah, we made the decision at the time and that was the best decision. Right? Well, stand up for your decision. Don't try to blame someone else. Don't try to blame your former L M P member, right? Uh, because you got up in debate and decided that the state government was not doing what they were doing and you didn't agree with it. Sorry, there was a point of order, sorry, Chair.
Was there a point of order? Point of order to you councillor Murphy.
Uh, Chair, will councillor Strong take a question?
No, thank you, councillor Murphy. So um I just, I just think it's really interesting that the way the debate's gone from from services to subsidies. Well, you know, um subsidies equal services and I think councillor Cassidy put that very succinctly. Um, it's all, it's all, it's all really based on what services that the that the residents are going to get from what we offer and and of course, council always, or this L M P uh council always says that it's the state government, it's TransLink that decide the routes, to cut the routes and everything. Well, well, what about that route that was up to Mount, Mount, um Mount Cootha? Um, you cut, it was your route, you you established it and you cut it. I remember there was a great fanfare when it was launched. Um, I think you, you know, after the last election, I think you all went up there as a group and stood on the summit and said, how great are we? That we're looking after Brisbane. Uh, but you weren't looking after the 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 patrons or the passengers that wanted to get up to Mount Cootha um on that on that bus service. And yes, yes, COVID did impact it. But you didn't say that you were suspending it. You said, we're, it's it's gone, it's gone. Uh, so I just think it's really shameful, really, the way this debate's gone. Um, the way that the the debate got pushed to the end of the end of the end of the programme, uh today's business, uh because it really just shows that the L M P is really not serious about any sort of debate. Any anytime we raise an issue, right, that you don't agree with, you know, it's all political. Well, sorry, the opposition's um job is to give oversight to what the heck you're doing and let people know what you're doing. And if we don't agree with it, we tell them we don't agree with it. And what's wrong with that? It's not political? Well, I suppose it is politics, but it's what our job is and we'll continue to do it. So get used to it. We're not done yet. And you can change the rules or you can adapt to the, you can either change the rules or adapt your own rules, but we'll continue to do the debate uh and let the people of Brisbane know what you're up to. Thank you, Chair.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Landers.
Mr. Chair, I know that council now adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councillors have left the meeting.
Seconded.
Seconded. A motion has been received for a suspension of our meeting time to allow for a dinner break. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
No.
Resume here in one hour. Thank you, councillors.